Recording in progress. The meeting is now being recorded. The live stream will begin when the chairman calls the meeting to order.
Okay, well, my computer says it's 10:00 a.m. So at this time, I called to order the May 19th, 2022 Douglas County Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. I do have a couple of housekeeping things to indicate. First of all, I would indicate that our chief deputy district attorney, Doug Ritchie, is in labor negotiations today with our team. And so his position will be conducted by our deputy DA, Sam Taylor. So I have that acknowledgement to make. Also, I've been informed that Commissioner Tarkanian has had a family medical emergency and will need to be leaving us at 1:00. So we wanted to acknowledge that as well and hope that everything works out okay in that regard. I do anticipate that this meeting will probably take more than two hours. I would prefer it didn't, but I don't anticipate we'll be able to get it over in two hours. So we'll be probably taking a lunch break sometime in the noonish hour, depending upon where we are on the agenda. So at this time, I would ask you all to raise for the invocation to be given to us by associate pastor of Valley Christian Fellowship, Eddie Sims, remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to be led today by vice chairman Wes Rice.
I was reading a quote that I thought was pretty good, especially in today's time. And it's from Abraham Lincoln.
And then it says, he said, "The shepherd drives the wolf from the sheep's throat, for which the sheep thanks the shepherd as his liberator, while the wolf denounces him for the same act as the destroyer of liberty. Plainly, the sheep and the wolf do not agree upon the definition of liberty." And I think Abraham Lincoln, of all people, understood that, you know, we all have our different opinions of different things. And especially in the world we live in today and in America, we all have different opinions on stuff. But Abraham Lincoln also was quoted as saying to somebody, "Sir, my concern is not whether God is on our side. My greatest concern is to be on God's side, for God is always right." And so if we can pray this morning, Father, we thank you for this country, the privilege of living in it. We pray this morning for our leadership and our national leadership, that you would just give our leaders wisdom and grace to do what is right and be on the side of righteousness. And Father, we pray this morning for our local, for these men and women that you have put in place to serve and to do what is right and what is just in our community. We are thankful for this community. And Father, we just pray, I pray, Lord, this day, that you just have your way in these proceedings and that you would just give our leaders wisdom and grace and a heart and a mind of justice. And we just thank you and we praise you in your name. Amen.
While we're standing, if you'd join me in the pledge to our wonderful flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate your attendance today. At this time, we'll go into public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker unless additional time is granted by the chairperson. The Board of Commissioners uses timing lights to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. You will see a green light when you begin and then a yellow light, which indicates that you have 30 seconds left, and you should start to conclude your comments. Once the light turns red, we ask you to please sit down. In addition to open public comment, public comment will also be taken on administrative agenda items that are identified for possible action in closing public comment. So at this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of County Commissioners. I would ask those members here to please silence your portable devices, your electronic devices. And when you approach the podium, if you would sign in and state your name for the record, we would appreciate that. So and once again, please try to limit your comments to items that are within the jurisdiction and control of this board. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jim Jackson, up in the Johnson Lane area. As you all know, it's a very hot subject. And I don't know how many of you were watching the BIA presentation last night online, but for myself, I have never heard so much BS in my life. The comments that came after the presentation by BIA, I thought, were very enlightening as to what is actually going to be happening up in our area. I don't know how many of you have ever been up there to see. I know a couple of you have. You've been to my house and everything. But one of the things that we, people were making comments on is that it seems that the county wants to say, there's nothing we can really do about this. Well, we all have a different opinion. We think you can stop it dead in its tracks and everything. There are several different ordinances or whatever that were mentioned last night. I don't have all of that detail, but I'm sure there is somebody here that does and everything. One of the things that was kind of percolating around is that perhaps the advice being given to the commissioners by the legal staff is saying, "We really don't want to do this because we're going to get sued by NOx, by the BIA, by the BLM." Well, I guarantee if you don't, there's going to be other lawsuits from all the people in that area suing everybody in sight. This is something that is going to destroy that area and won't be recoverable. Also, with that number of trucks going down Johnson Lane and across Fremont and over East Valley, because the truck driver will take the quickest, shortest route he can to where he's going to deliver and everything. So everybody in that area is going to be impacted. Also, coming down Sunrise Pass Road, whether it's the trucks or just the people that are working out there, they're going to use that. And believe me, the trucks will go down there also. I don't know who's going to be enforcing the speed limits other than our sheriff, but how are you going to have cars out there enough times to enforce the laws for 80 trucks going down Johnson Lane? That's in the summer, when it's going to be extremely dangerous. What about in the winter, when Johnson Lane gets iced over? You think an 80,000-pound truck coming down there at 45 miles an hour is going to stop if some child runs out into the road or some bicycle? No, it won't. The intersection at 395 wasn't built for these-sized trucks. They say it was, but they didn't want to move the stoplight when they put that acceleration lane in. If you go there and you watch these trucks, they swing out into the fast lanes, or they'll swing all the way over onto the left side of Johnson Lane to make the turn. That's an accident waiting to happen. It's going to happen up there. And I noticed in the paper that there was three fatal accidents in the county in the past few weeks. If this goes through, there will be many more on that Johnson Lane area. So thank you, and you'll hear from several more of us today.
Thank you. Do we have additional public comment? I would remind you that we will be discussing that, the BIA and the Painted Rock Mine, on item one of the administrative agenda. So if you have comments in regards to the Painted Rock Mine, I would ask you to wait until that time versus this time for public comment. Thank you. Is there any additional public comment on items that are not necessarily on the agenda today? If not, then Ms. Johnson, do we have public comment online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. We do have public comment online. Ellie, do you have opening public comment at this time?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please state your name and we'll start your time.
Aloha. Sorry I can't attend today, so I will be addressing items five through eight on your agenda in this one public comment. I agree, the county needs a new judicial and law enforcement center and room for expansion for other county groups. Items five through eight are all interrelated, but items five and eight are for presentation only, not allowing for public comment during the presentations. In my opinion, the planning commission should be reviewing before the county commissioners, even though allowed by the Buckeye Farm specific plan, it's an Ag-19 rezone request. I believe an update to all of the specific plan should come first as a joint meeting between the planning commissioners and the Board of County Commissioners before the request for the Ag-19 conversion is approved, along with the proposed $5 million purchase. One example of major discussion is donating a parcel but keeping water rights to be discussed. The estimated cost for developing plans and building of the J-Lick is another discussion that is going to take a lot of time. The public should have ample opportunity to weigh in on the entire specific plan, not just a singular piecemeal change. Also, an update on the financing for Mueller Parkway is appropriate, as in 2025, the county has due diligence, and we still, as the public, do not know if the funding sources are even close to being in place. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson. For the record, again, I do have one more person. Phillip, do you have opening public comment at this time?
Yes, I do. My name is Phillip Lawrence. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I have one vacation rental that my wife and me spend time up in Douglas County. And I went through the renewal process, and my license was renewed on May 10th, or effective date of June 10th. My question has to do with the new code that went into effect, as I understand it, on April 21st. I had an inspection done on April 19th, and the fire inspection, the fire inspector told me that they had to count bedrooms, so he counted the bedrooms. And he told me that, which I already understood, he told me that I would still have the same number of people that I've had since 2013, which is 10. And instead, when I got the approval on May 10th, I was told that they have not implemented and apparently have, it sounds like they have no intention of implementing the new limit of, or actually, it's continuation of a previous limit of two per bedroom plus two for up to four-bedroom units. So my only question or comment was, is this county policy now that they are going to continue to do this, despite the fact that they have a new ordinance in effect? And Todd, basically, the agency that is processing the application, they basically told me in a phone call yesterday that they are aware of the changes, but they have been directed by the county to tell people that nothing's going to be done at this time. So that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. At this time, there's no further public comment online.
Thank you. Mr. Commissioner Ingles?
About three weeks ago, in the Ace parking lot, a guy was busted for selling fentanyl. They're busted by our sheriff's department. And then the sheriff's department busted him. The judge set his bail at $200,000. He posted bail immediately. Now, who has $200,000 laying around? Well, apparently, this drug dealer did. And he's local, he's out of the ranchos. So the point is, is that this guy is selling a very deadly narcotic. He should be in jail at no bail because he's going to put people's lives at risk. This fentanyl stuff can, if it gets on your skin, it can kill you. So I don't know why the judge let him out. I don't know if he's a flight risk, if he's still around, or what the status is. But that bail was way too lenient. So if the sheriff would like, I think the sheriff was in on the bust. Were you sheriff? Yeah. So this stuff is, this stuff has arrived in our area, and the administration is not doing anything about it. And it's the CHICOMs that manufacture it and send it over, and they're killing us off. Over 100,000 people have died of fentanyl poisoning just this year alone. So be aware and watch for things like this going on in your neighborhood, because this is a local guy. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ingles. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as stated.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Tarkanian, seconded by Commissioner Rice, to approve the agenda as presented. Since seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Approval of previous minutes for possible action to discussion to approve the draft minutes of April 7th, 2022, regular meeting of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the previous minutes.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Noah Sad, seconded by Commissioner Tarkanian, to approve the draft minutes of April 7th, 2022, regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes five to zero. We will now adjourn as the Board of County Commissioners, well, we won't adjourn, we will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and reconvene as the Douglas County Liquor Board. I do want to indicate that the Liquor Board also has sitting on it our sheriff, Dan Coverley. So motions will be, have available a six-o vote, or a six-person vote, I should say, not six-o vote necessarily. So with that, item one on the Liquor Board is for possible action to discussion to approve the addition of Tracy Lee Mitchell to the existing adult characterized license for Premier Entertainment Tahoe LLC DBA Bally's Lake Tahoe. Tracy Lee Mitchell has signed a waiver of notice of hearing. Premier Entertainment Tahoe LLC DBA Bally's Lake Tahoe is located at 55 U.S. Highway 50, State Line, Nevada, 89449. And this will be presented by Captain Mitch Ternan. Captain?
Good morning. Captain Ron Mitch Ternan for the sheriff's office. Ms. Mitchell has met all the requirements to be added to this adult characterized license.
So you're presenting it without objection?
Yes, we are in support of this addition.
Okay. Is there any questions in this regard to Captain Mitch Ternan? Seeing none, this is an action item, so we'll go to public comment. Are there any members of chambers that wish to offer public comment on this item? Seeing none, Ms. Johnson, is there public comment online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. There is one public comment online at this time. Ellie, do you have public comment on the Liquor Board item, Roman numeral one?
Ellie Waller, for the record, I do not. I just want to bring forward that I think you have a process issue. I wanted to make a comment on the agenda and ask for items to be removed, and you did not offer that opportunity. And I didn't know any other way to do that other than now. I did send an email to Patrick Cates and Sam Taylor about my request, because there was no public comment on the agenda. Thank you.
Ms. Waller, I will address that after we, we're in the middle of this motion, so we'll address that just shortly, okay? Bringing it back to the board for a possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the addition of Tracy Lee Mitchell to the existing adult characterized license for Premier Entertainment Tahoe LLC Bailey's, Bally's Lake Tahoe, and approve it as presented.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Noah Sad, to approve the addition of Tracy Lee Mitchell to the unrestricted, to the existing adult characterized license for Premier Entertainment Tahoe DBA Bally's Lake Tahoe. Any other discussion? Seeing no other discussion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Ms. Waller, I want to come back to you on that. I appreciate the oversight there, or the notification of the oversight. There was an item, I take it, on the consent calendar you wish to have pulled to the administrative agenda, is that correct?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes.
You're still in the Liquor License Board, and I'd also like to note that I think the vote was six to zero. I think Sheriff Coverley did vote in favor of the motion. And so you'd need to go back to the BOCC to rectify any issue relative to the agenda.
Thank you for pointing out that oversight as well. Anyways, okay. The previous motion passes six to zero for the record, sorry about that. And we will finish up the items in the Liquor Board and then come back to the board, the Board of County Commissioners, at which time, Ms. Waller, I will entertain your request to move an item off of the consent calendar, okay? Thank you. So we'll go into item Roman numeral two for possible action discussion to approve the addition of Tracy Lee Mitchell to the existing package retail liquor license, onsite unrestricted license, caterers liquor license, entertainment endorsement, and a non-restricted gaming license for Premier Entertainment Tahoe LLC DBA Bally's Lake Tahoe. Tracy Lee Mitchell has signed a waiver of notice of hearing. Premier Entertainment Tahoe LLC DBA Bally's Lake Tahoe is located at 55 U.S. Highway 50, State Line, Nevada, 89449. Captain Mitch Ternan.
And again, Ms. Mitchell has met all the requirements to be added to these licenses, and we are not in objection.
Thank you. Any questions by the board? Seeing nothing, is there any questions in gallery? Seeing none, are there any, is there anybody online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. I do have Ms. Waller, who has her hand raised. Ms. Waller, do you have public comment on the Liquor Board item, Roman numeral two?
I do not. I just have it raised for when I do get an opportunity. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. There's no further public comment online at this time.
Thank you. We'll bring it back to the board. Any additional comments or possible motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the addition of Tracy Lee Mitchell to the existing package retail liquor license, onsite unrestricted license, caterers liquor license, entertainment endorsement, and non-restricted gaming license for Premier Entertainment Tahoe LLC, doing business as Bally's Lake Tahoe.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Noah Sad, to approve the addition of Tracy Lee Mitchell to the existing package retail liquor license, onsite unrestricted license, caterers liquor license, entertainment endorsement, and non-restricted gaming license for Premier Entertainment Tahoe LLC DBA Bally's Lake Tahoe. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. Okay. Item number three for possible action discussion to approve the addition of an unrestricted caterers liquor license to the existing onsite unrestricted liquor license for Drunk Puppy LLC DBA Wild Horse Bar and Grill, represented by Levi Latham owner. Levi Latham has signed a waiver of notice of hearing. Drunk Puppy LLC DBA Wild Horse Bar and Grill is located at 1679 U.S. Highway 395 and Unit C., Mendon, Nevada, 89423. Captain Mitch Ternan.
Mr. Latham has met all the requirements for this application, and we are not in objection.
Are there any members of the public who wish to offer comment at this time in this regard, in this item? Seeing none, Ms. Johnson, is there anybody online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. At this time, there's no public comment online.
Thank you. Bringing it back to the board for questions or motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the addition of an unrestricted caterers liquor license to the existing onsite unrestricted liquor license for Drunk Puppy LLC, doing business as Wild Horse Bar and Grill, represented by Levi Latham owner.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Noah Sad, seconded by Commissioner Tarkanian, to approve the addition of an unrestricted caterers liquor license to the existing onsite unrestricted liquor license for Drunk Puppy LLC DBA Wild Horse Bar and Grill, represented by Levi Latham owner. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. And item number four for possible action discussion to approve And item number four for possible action discussion to approve the onsite unrestricted liquor license and caterers license for Kokomo's LLC DBA Kokos on Main, represented by owners Amber Ann Laramore and Maurice Benjamin Laramore. Amber Lynn, Amber Ann Laramore and Maurice Benjamin Laramore have signed a waiver of notice of hearing. Kokos on Main is located at 1404 U.S. Highway 395 North, Gardenville, Nevada, 89410. Once again, Captain Mitch Taranian.
And these applicants, Mr. and Mrs. Laramore, have met all the requirements, and we are not in objection.
Is there anybody in chambers who wishes to offer public comment in that, in this regard? Sensing none, Ms. Johnson, is there anybody online that wishes to offer public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. At this time, there's no public comment online.
Okay. Bringing it back to Board for possible motion.
I make a motion to approve the onsite unrestricted liquor license and caterers license for Kokomo's LLC, doing business as Kokos on Main, represented by owners Amber Ann Laramore and Maurice Benjamin Laramore. Amber Ann Laramore and Maurice Benjamin Laramore have signed a waiver of notice of the hearing.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Noah Sad, seconded by Commissioner Rice to approve the onsite unrestricted liquor license and caterers license for Kokomo's LLC DBA Kokos on Main, represented by owners Amber Ann Laramore and Maurice Benjamin Laramore. Sensing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero again, so, thank you. So at this time then, I will adjourn as the Douglas County Liquor Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners, and we're now into the consent calendar, and so at this time, Ms. Waller, did you have an item on the consent calendar you wished to withdraw to the admin calendar? You want to check with her on that?
Ms. Waller, do you have a comment to withdraw an item on the consent calendar?
I do not. My request is on the general agenda. I would have requested a consent item removed during open public comment, as always instructed to take at that time. I wanted to address the administrative agenda, which the public has an opportunity to ask for removal of items. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Taylor.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify a couple things. One, because we have opening and public comment, Sam Taylor, Douglas County DA's office for the record, because we have opening and closing public comment, you do not need to have public comment on the agenda and the approval of the agenda. Moreover, the consent calendar makes it quite clear that if you wish to pull something from the consent calendar, you must do so during opening public comment, and it's clearly stated on the agenda. So there was adequate notice to the public as to what is required to remove something from consent calendar.
Thank you. I hope that clarifies your questions, Ms. Waller. So at this time then, we'll go into the consent calendar. Do any of the Commissioners have anything they wish to withdraw from the consent calendar? And at this time, I could ask if the public also had, no, they would have had to do so as you're saying in your opening public comment, so sensing none, Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent calendar, items A through Q as presented.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Ingles to approve the consent calendar as presented, items A through Q. Sensing no further discussion. Does this, does this require a public comment? No, okay. Okay. Sensing no, I'm a little lost today, I'm sorry. I did have surgery on Tuesday, and I think it may be distracting me a little bit. Anyways, all those in favor signify by saying aye on the consent calendar.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes five to zero to approve the consent calendar as presented, items A through Q. Thank you. Okay. Now we'll go into the administrative agenda and go to item number one for possible action. Discussion to provide public comment from the Board of County Commissioners to the Bureau of Indian Affairs, BIA, on an environmental assessment for the proposed Painted Rock Mine located two miles east of the end of Johnson Lane on Sunrise Pass Road on BIA allotment trust land, APN 1321-00-001-001. And this is being presented by County Manager Patrick Cates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to give a little background on what brought us here today. So the Bureau of Indian Affairs has responsibility for Indian trust land, this is land that they hold in trust for individual tribal members, and their federal mandate is to use those lands for the economic benefit of those tribal members. The Painted Rock Mine, the environmental assessment that was prepared under BIA authority is required under the National Environmental Protection Act, and the Bureau of Indian Affairs under federal law has sole jurisdiction to approve this project. Because it is on federal land, county zoning does not apply. Our master plan does not apply, that our county authority does not extend to federal lands. I know that's very frustrating for the community. I personally find that frustrating. I am a resident of Johnson Lane myself, and I am not in favor of seeing an industrial operation east of our Johnson Lane neighborhood. However, having said that, the county lacks jurisdiction and tools to be able to prevent this project from going forward. It is under the authority of the Bureau of Indian Affairs, and I know that there has been discussion about Johnson Lane and the suitability of that road. Johnson Lane actually was constructed by the Nevada Department of Transportation. It is built to a standard that would accommodate trucks. It does have trucks on it today. That road was turned over to the county many years ago, and the environmental assessment did contemplate alternative routes, but that, the BIA has made determination, it seems that the Johnson Lane route is the most economically feasible for this project. Originally, this came forward, the draft environmental assessment report came forward last year. There was obviously a lot of concern among the public and the county at that time. Thanks to Congressman Amade, he intervened with the Bureau of Indian Affairs and requested that they go back and redo the environmental assessment and that they accept Douglas County as a cooperating agency. That means that a cooperating agency can comment on the draft environmental assessment and provide input to the BIA in order to help them arrive at a decision point. I will say that having a local government participate as a cooperating agency is fairly rare under environmental assessment NEPA processes. However, we were thankful to have that opportunity to provide our input. I would also say that before the environmental assessment was redone, when it originally came forward, county staff had reached out to Knox, the contractor that has proposed to operate this operation, and knowing that we lacked tools to be able to prevent this or have the county have any decision-making in this, we entered into negotiations with Knox to provide some protections for the community. It included provisions such as payments based on their sales that would go into a fund to help for the construction, reconstruction of Johnson Lane over time, and that they would have a variety of mitigation measures regarding noise, dust, and that sort of thing. That agreement came before the Board of County Commissioners last year, and the Board did approve that agreement. However, the Board also opposed the environmental assessment as it was done at that time, and of course, as I mentioned, the intervention of Congressman Amade, and so Knox never signed that agreement. He refused to sign it based on our, our lack of support and opposition to the project. So once the BIA started their NEPA process again and developing a new environmental assessment report, we did enter into a cooperating agreement with them for technical review of that project. I asked Assistant County Manager Jennifer Davidson to head up a group of staff. In order to do that, Phil Ricker, Tom Delaire, and John Herb were major participants in that process. They are also here in the audience today to be able to answer any questions about, about that process. So the environmental assessment that is now been issued by the BIA and is under review for public comment, it's a 30-day public comment period. We did provide a lot of input related to impacts on the community, suitability of Johnson Lane. One of the major issues that we were seeking was to have a traffic study so that we could quantify the impact of these operations. Basically, all of the county's concerns were basically dismissed by the Bureau of Indian Affairs, and it's important to understand that, that the NEPA process is concerned foremost with environmental impacts, and unfortunately, it doesn't take into consideration, I think it should, but under federal law, it doesn't take into consideration impacts to communities or, or infrastructure. So it's challenging. We were very frustrated with how this has turned out and how our concerns were not adequately addressed in this environmental assessment. Currently, under the 30-day review process, the Bureau of Indian Affairs, once they receive the public comments that will end this month, I know it was alluded to in public comments, they held a couple of online workshops to take public comment, and then they'll issue a decision. They will either approve the project, or they may require more environmental studies. Given what has been said thus far and the, the public sessions they have, I think it seems pretty clear that they're moving towards approving this project, which is very frustrating for the entire community. The purpose of this agenda item is for the Board to provide public comment to the Bureau of Indian Affairs. As I said, there really isn't authority that the Board has to approve or deny this project or condition it. We did provide a draft letter to the BIA to be proposed, to be submitted to them. That is on page 380 of your packet, and basically, it objects to the lack of consideration in the environmental assessment for the county's concerns, and it does refer back to the Knox agreement and requests that, since the county does not have authority to enforce these conditions, that we would ask the, the BIA, if they are intent on approving the project, to enforce those provisions that were in the agreement. Again, very frustrating, not the way we want to see development done in this community, but on federal land, the county just does not have jurisdiction. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and as I said, we have members of the Technical Review Group in the audience that can provide specifics. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cates. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Questions or concerns?
If Knox does not sign the agreement, what does that mean?
For the record, Patrick Cates, it, it means the agreement is not executed, it is not binding in any way.
So we won't see any trucks going down Johnson Lane then?
No, sir. The BIA, if they approve the project, will authorize that to go forward, it just means none of the terms of the agreement are enforceable. It won't stop the project. It'll just remove any conditions that the county was seeking on it.
Commissioner Tarkanian?
Okay, so you've said a couple times how wonderful it is that the BIA allowed us to be a joint participant. What good is that if they just ignore everything we want?
I don't believe I said that was wonderful.
It's very rare that we have a, we could participate in this, and that you thanked the Congressman several times for getting this done, and my point is, if this is such a good thing that we can participate, but all they do is do a rouge, and they don't listen to any of the concerns that we have, valid concerns, which I'm sure the, the audience will address pretty soon, what good is it?
As I said, we are very frustrated with how that process has went forward and how our comments were not considered as part of the process. There's nothing good about it, sir.
Okay. So the next thing is, on several occasions, you said we have nothing we can do to stop the project, but we do, this Board is responsible for the health and welfare and the quiet enjoyment of people's homes and residential neighborhoods. And, I mean, what is it, 120 trucks per day are going to go by this road, residential neighborhood? I think we have the ability, we'll discuss some more after the public comments, to regulate what kind of traffic is going through neighborhoods. Let's say this was a, this was a, some type of a waste plant or something, and we can't stop the BIA from putting in there. Are we going to say it's okay for them to transport that through a residential neighborhood?
Is that a rhetorical question, or?
It should be. It should be, but it makes a point. I mean, again, I, what, what I don't like about your presentation is you say we can't do anything about it. Now, we can be reasonable, we have to follow certain legal guidelines, but we're not going to put our community at risk because the BIA and Knox excavation doesn't think there's an economically alternative route. Not that there isn't an alternative route, it's an economic one. So we're supposed to value the profit margin of Knox excavation and the BIA members to this health and safety of our public? I think there is some stuff we can do, and I think we need to do it. That's all, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Noah Sad.
A little further on the BIA, we always be concerned about us having been sued. Can we turn those tables and sue the BIA?
For the record, Patrick Cates, anybody can file a lawsuit in court for any reason. I think that would be a very difficult case to win. I would defer to the, pardon me, I just went blank, I keep wanting to call you the Attorney General.
Difficult as it may be.
District Attorney's Office, in terms of the legality of that.
Difficult as you may see that, I think we got a Marine in the audience here, he was here. It was really difficult to take Mount Suribachi, but we did it because we had to, and if we have to sue the BIA in order to keep our citizens healthy and well, liking their neighborhoods and liking where they live, I think we can, that's a, that's a, if we, we got to stand up somewhere. Right now, we're saying, we're done. I disagree with that.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rice.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that the, I'm not saying that I disagree with the, with the other Commissioners, what I'm, what I'm asking is, it seems to me that the, the action item on the agenda today is to approve or disapprove the letter to be sent from Douglas County to the BIA, is that correct?
That is correct, and I would just add that it does ask the BIA to, to impose conditions. If we don't want to go that route and impose those conditions and just have the letter say, no, we're opposed to this, we could certainly do that, but then I think there's zero chance of them putting any conditions that would be beneficial to the community.
And that's the point I was going to make. It isn't just approving this letter or not approving it, it's what we want in that letter, and that's what the discussion is, and my questions were. I don't think we should be giving in that, hey, there's nothing we can do to stop this.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rice.
I believe that it might be helpful if, for those that have not seen it, to have the letter written, read into the record.
I have no objections to that whatsoever. Would you like to read it, or do you want me to? Would you like to read it, or do you want me to read it? Or would you read it?
I'll, I'll read it. Yes. On behalf of the board, should you choose to. So, this is addressed to Chip Lewis. He's the Regional Environmental Protection Specialist for the Bureau of Indian Affairs, and he's responsible for heading up this E, Environmental Assessment Review. Dear Mr. Lewis, on behalf of Douglas County and the Board of County Commissioners, I am writing you to provide public comment on the in-draft environmental assessment on the proposed painted rock mine located on trust land east of the Johnson Lane neighborhood. Douglas County appreciates the opportunity to participate as a cooperating agency in the preparation of the revised EA for the project. As a cooperating agency, county staff were authorized to review the EA as it was drafted and to provide comments and voice concerns throughout the process. Now that the EA has been finalized, county staff remain concerned that many of the legitimate issues raised were not adequately addressed. Truck traffic from this project remains a significant concern for county staff and our residents. While Johnson Lane was constructed for truck traffic, the increase in trucks, associated noise, roadway east of our industrial park will have a negative impact on county residents. If this project is approved, industrial truck traffic would be introduced into a busy residential area where it has never existed before. Several homeowners access their homes directly from Johnson Lane. Additionally, the road was not designed to provide bicyclists, pedestrians, and outdoor recreation through this safe, shared access consistent with today's standards. For these reasons, vehicle and pedestrian safety east of Vicki remains a primary concern to this county, to this county. Instead of Johnson Lane, the BIA should require construction of a new road to the east of the mine site to divert traffic either north or south to US 50 or 395 away from existing residential neighborhoods. In lieu of constructing an alternative route, a traffic analysis must be done to determine that capacity improvements, to determine what capacity improvements are needed at US 395 and Johnson Lane intersection, as well as a gap study completed for the two merged movements. At the very least, the permit should be conditioned to prohibit use of Sunrise Road to Fremont Street and East Valley Road, except in an emergency. These local county roads are not built for trucks. In the absence of authority to approve or condition this project, the county attempted to enter into a voluntary agreement with NOx Excavating to mitigate some of the impacts of the proposed project on Douglas County and the residents of the Johnson Lane area. Despite the Board of County Commissioners approving a draft agreement in 2020, NOx Excavating subsequently declined to execute the agreement. For this reason, we are requesting the BIA impose conditions on the permit for this project, consistent with the terms of that agreement. The draft agreement with NOx Excavating attached to this letter for reference included payment from the operator of a percentage of the gross proceeds of the sale of material from the mining operations over a 20-year period. This revenue would be used to help offset the cost to the county for road repair and maintenance due to increased truck traffic. In absence of this agreement, BIA should require the operator to contribute an equivalent percentage of proceeds from mining operations to the county for the duration of the project, so the taxpaying citizens of Douglas County do not have to bear the increased cost. Flooding is also a substantial concern for our community. The residents of the Johnson Lane area have been impacted by a number of significant flash flooding events in the last 10 years. Our stormwater program has conducted studies of at least one of these drainages and is currently working with BLM to permit retention basins to protect our community. We understand that dirt berm will be constructed on the downhill side of the proposed site, and BIA should consider imposing conditions on the permit that drainage improvements may need to be made downstream of the proposed site in the future, should these berms be removed or altered. As part of the draft agreement, NOx agreed to cooperate with the county to develop drainage improvements to reduce flooding impacts to East Valley Road drainage area north of Eldon Way, south of Sunrise Pass, and southeast of Johnson Lane Drainage Area Plan. The proposed improvements would reduce the frequency and impact of these flooding events in the residents of Johnson Lane. The county requests that the BIA require the cooperation as a condition of this project. This should also include a requirement that the operator cooperate with BLM and the county on an EA for a proposed bridge at Sunrise Pass Road and Johnson Lane Wash, crossing to obtain an all-weather crossing into the Pine Nut Range during a flooding event. Once constructed, this would reduce or eliminate the need of the operator to utilize Sunrise Pass Road as an emergency access to the site during adverse weather conditions. Finally, road noise from the project and dust from the trucks using Sunrise Pass and Johnson Lane were also addressed in the draft agreement. The permit should be required to construct earthen berms or other noise control measures at the mine site as required by the BLM and the Mine Safety and Health Administration at its sole cost. Hours of observations of the mine should be limited to 7:00 AM and 5:30 PM daily. Dust control measures in times, manners, and place required by the BLM and the county to avoid creation of a public nuisance should also be a condition of approval. We appreciate the unique mission the BIA has to manage trust lands. However, the county's concerns have not been adequately addressed in the draft EA. I call upon the BIA to adequately address these concerns as conditions of approval of this project. The county is willing to work cooperatively, be a good neighbor, and act in good faith if this project is approved, subject to these conditions. We expect the same of the federal agencies managing lands within Douglas County.
Thank you. Additional questions?
I, I had some things that I wanted to express. As I see it, and I, and I wanted to go back to when this was first brought to our attention. It's my understanding, it was not last year, it was September of 2020, if I'm not mistaken. Okay, so several members of this board were not members of that board at that time. In addition to that, it's my understanding that Congressman Amade was contacted in this regard, and he insisted upon, as I understand it, a traffic study in regards to the impact of this. And to my knowledge, that has not been done. And when I visited with him at the Business Council debates several weeks ago, he asked me that direct question, and I indicated that it, to my knowledge, it had not been done. And so, that additionally concerns me. I share Commissioner Tarkanian's questions or, or concerns or insight into the fact that somehow we've become a cooperating entity. Now, that probably is some type of a legal term, because I don't know that this board intends to cooperate with this. And I know that our residents don't really want to cooperate with this either. So, that's kind of a misleading term to be a cooperating entity.
Just want to qualify that statement for legalities. We will cooperate with anything that's reasonable that doesn't affect the health and welfare of our community. Okay? Make that clear on the record.
Sure, I understand that. So, I guess my question, and so I understand also there's two, two possibilities in regards to environmental assessments, an environmental assessment versus an environmental impact assessment or, or study. And I understand the much more broad range of an environmental impact study is much greater than an environmental assessment, if I'm not mistaken. So, I'm not sure why we didn't require that versus an EA. But are there going to be additional public forums in, that our residents can speak out to regarding this, or are they done with their public forums? Do you, do you know the answer to that possible?
Yeah, for the record, Patrick Kates. So, they had two online forums in the last two days, and that's all that they've announced in terms of public forums for this public comment process.
Okay. So, do we have any, I guess the question I have is, do we have any jurisdiction to require Mr. Lewis to address this board and our public in, in this type of a forum to, to address these concerns?
Mr. Chair, Sam Taylor, Douglas County DA's office for the record. Unfortunately, no, because it's a federal entity, we cannot demand that they appear before this body and provide feedback or evidence or even have a discussion. I mean, it's quite frankly under their control and jurisdiction, as long as they follow the processes set out in federal law relative to a NEPA. They can approve the project without having to come before this board.
Well, you know, and I've expressed this before, I, I don't see any existing acceptable county route out of this area onto 395. And that's, and that's the biggest concern I think we all have, is, is that it's got to go through, if it exists, if it uses existing routes, whether that be Stephanie Lane, whether that be Johnson Lane, whether that be Sunrise Pass, whether that all go all the way down to Buckeye or even Fish Springs Road and, and Toller, all of that, in my mind, is unacceptable routes, because all of that goes through areas of residences within our county and tears up county roads, which this board is responsible for, for ensuring that those roads are navigable and assessable by our, our county residents. So, all of these concerns I, I have, and it's extremely distasteful, extremely distasteful. And I, I certainly appreciate the members of our public who are here today, and I certainly want to listen to them and make sure that their comments go on the record. And then whatever we submit as a board to the Bureau of Indian Affairs, I would like to ensure that we have all of our public comments submitted along with our comments, as well as a board and, and whatever other documentation we submit. I, I'm hoping that we're not bending over and, or giving up on this, because I'm certainly not of that mindset. So, any additional comments, Mr. Ingalls? Commissioner Ingalls?
Years ago, all the way down to Bishop and everything, the Paiute tribe and its entities were sovereign to this land, and that's the way they look at it. In the 1850s, all of a sudden, white men started to show up and ranch. It got so contentious that the Seventh Cavalry was brought in to take care of the Indian situation, because there were some fights that went on, and they killed the Indians. So, the Indians look at it completely different than all of us white folk do. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, it's just the way it is. And this is what we're going to be up against. And you go into federal court and think you're going to win anything, you're going to lose. Because the reason they've been given this sovereign land is exactly that. It's trying to placate and make some amends. That's the way it is, that you see these Indian gaming casinos popping up in California and other locations. Nothing anybody can do about it. That's their land, and they can do what they want with it. So, something to think about. We're all here, and we took that land away from them, so they aren't going to give it up lightly. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ingalls? Commissioner Rice?
Thank you, sir. There's a couple of things I would like to address. Number one, to the folks in opposition to this project, please forgive the members of this board for not responding to all of your emails and telephone calls. We haven't responded, not because we don't care. We, we don't have any staff. And I don't know about them, but my email has blown up, and there's absolutely no way, other than staying up to 5:00 in the morning every day, that I can respond to all of the emails. Please know that we, and I'm sure I'm speaking for the entire board-
The HRs, too.
Yeah. Well, we have more than one problem that we're working on. But I want you to know that because we may not have responded to your phone call mess, that you left a message on our phones, or to the emails, do not think that we haven't read them, and do not think that we are not in sympathy with, with the feelings of the emails that we have received. Having said that, I think that we need to approve this. But in, in addition to approving this letter to be sent, which I think strongly states our objection to what's happening, I think that we need to be looking, counsel, at ways of impeding the access to our roads in any way that we can, be it by limiting the weight limit, the speed limit, the, it, look at everything that we can do to, I hate to say that, but to show a lack of cooperation on our part, and that we will do everything in our power to make sure that our residents are inconvenienced as little as possible, should this get rammed down our throats without us having to have any meaningful impact on what's going to be happening. Thank you.
Commissioner Tarkanian, I sense you have additional comments?
Again, I'm going to, I'm not going to speak on behalf of Mr. Commissioner Rice, but I will say, this matter most likely is headed to litigation from some of our residents or from the BIA. And there's got to be very careful how you word things. And I think the intent is, we would love to see this project proceed if it does not impact the health and welfare and noise pollution and other issues dealing with our residents. You can't say we're going to impede it no matter what, or you could put the county at a huge risk for a lawsuit. I don't think that's what Commissioner Rice meant. He meant that we're going to protect you as our constituents the best way we can, and we will fight for you the best way we can. And hopefully, we can find an alternative means for this to proceed.
Commissioner Ingalls, you had additional comments?
Yes, thank you. Our ranch is off of Kimerling, and it wasn't far from the Bing Aggregate Plant. And trucks would go up and down Kimerling all day long, and they're the big gravel trucks that you're all talking about. Bing operated with a special use permit. They'd been operating since 1967. There were never any restrictions, anything of that nature in regard to the trucks that were using Kimerling. So, if we get into a dogfight, the opposition is going to use this as, "Well, you never did anything in regard to Kimerling being used. All of a sudden, are you picking on these guys?" So, the point is, we get into a lot of these situations. We just got into a situation with the synagogue up at the, up at the lake. And there were three of us who were in opposition to the special use permit for parking, because parking is such a nightmare up there.
Mr. Ingalls, we need to stay on topic here with-
I am on topic. And the point is, is that we were looking at a lawsuit that we couldn't win. So, what was the point? We can get into a lawsuit and go around in circles and get into a big dust-up and then just lose. There has to be a practical reality at looking these things. Now, Johnson Lane sued the county over water runoff and, and the water management up in that area, to the tune, I think it was $1.3 million. We lost. So, we formed a department, and the whole objective of that department is to go after the water runoff. Well, we have another problem because of the people that go out there on the weekends from California with their ATVs and chew up the BLM land, and they create new culverts every season. Now, they've moved that back so that they can't go and use the same areas they used to, but they're going to be doing the same thing. And we're going to have the same, it's a constant problem. So, we don't want to create any false hope that this is going to be magically resolved. We're fighting an awful lot of very powerful entities that have already thoroughly investigated this. So, the, the point is, is that I understand your feelings, but this is what we're up against. Thank you.
Thank you. All good comments by the commissioners. At this time, sensing nothing else from the commissioners, I would like to open the floor to public comment. So, and I would remind you that everybody is under a three-minute time limit so that we can get as many or all the public comment in. What's that?
My name is PK Klein-
Yes, I would remind you, if you, if you, excuse me just a minute, excuse me just a minute, okay?
Yep.
If you have public comment on this item, I would like to expedite the swiftness of this. I would remind you, when you come to the microphone, to state your name, sign in for the record. And then, those of you who wish to follow this lady, would please line up against the wall so that we can-
wall so that we can facilitate this, okay? We do understand that this is a very passionate issue and it, that passion is shared by this board. I think you've come to understand in this process, hopefully. So, now you may proceed.
My name is PK Klein. My husband and I live in the area that will be directly affected if the BIA, BLM, and Douglas County all agree to approve the painted rock mine. Thank you Douglas County Commissioners for the opportunity to express vehement opposition to the previous attempts to shove this project through a flawed process obscured by faulty analysis and reams of questionable data by outside federal agencies and their paid consultants who clearly have not taken into account the legitimate concerns of local residents, taxpayers, constituents, and homeowners. This wasn't a fair analysis, but rather an excuse. Simplistic, unrealistic analysis leading to predetermined desired outcomes is an insult to the people who live here and can actually foresee the impacts of the unwarranted, irresponsible mining activity. As to no scoping for this project several years ago and quoting from Section 4.1 of the EA, quote, "Based on the mistaken belief that approval of a routine sand and gravel lease on rural uninhabited Indian-owned allotment was of no particular concern to the public and that impacts would be limited to the private allotted land, simply not true. When access to the allotment demands substantial additional outside resources be employed to the detriment of the Johnson Lane residents and other members of the public. Approving the proposed NOX excavating lease with minimal or no consideration of the absolutely essential access required over a Douglas County road over which you have authority is extremely problematic. This disingenuous construct reaches misleading conclusions that somehow the project's objectives override the established Minden Douglas County community's concerns for safety, increased noise, traffic, stress on water resources, air quality, and severe impact on home values." I get the BIA objective of trying to maximize benefits for 12 allottees of allotment CC-346, but it certainly seems it would have made a whole lot more sense to have explored similar opportunities long before the Johnson Lane area became well-populated. And as I understand, the allotments were granted 125 years ago, but here we are. It is appalling and ridiculous that BIA and BLM cite an unnamed realtor who claims this project will have no impact on home values. That three other mine sites are put forth for the proposition that no reduction in home values occurred near those three other sites is specious. Bing was started long before homes were built nearby. Similar circumstances appear to have existed for the Shaw-Neva and the Rylyte mines located in remote areas near Sparks, also sparsely inhabited. These are false comparisons wholly without merit. The EA also cavalierly concludes no improvement to Johnson Lane or a rideaway from Douglas County would be required. Really? When at least 170 daily trips by haul dump trucks will occur? Who pays for maintenance, resurfacing, snow ice removal, speed monitoring, ensuring that NOX abides by its representations? All of this is expected to be borne by Douglas County or its taxpayers? That's unreasonable. The non-local federal government agencies and consultants clearly have no experience with the already significant disruptive truck traffic on Johnson Lane and more is not acceptable. Let's do the right thing, find a reasonable alternative. Douglas County step up and take responsibility for protecting the county's rights through whatever means necessary and leave Johnson Lane and its residents in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. As you noticed, we allowed a little bit more time than the three minutes there, so, and so...
Thank you for that. Jim Jackson. If you think the BIA is going to listen to anything you say in the letter you send them, you're not with it. All you had to do was listen to their presentation last night. They're going to approve this no matter what we say or what we do. So, live with that. It's up to the county to stop them at the county border. You cannot stop them from building the mine out there. You can't stop the B, the BLM from allowing them to drive across their property. Like you said, that is federal land. We don't have jurisdiction. But the minute it hits the county line, you have jurisdiction. Either close the road that goes from Fremont to the end of the dirt road there and both Sunrise Pass and Johnson Lane, close it. They can't use it, period. Put restrictions on it. Make it so expensive for NOX that they can't make money, then they'll stop and they'll move. It's up to you individuals to protect the people in this county. That's why we've elected you, that's why we have you on these, that's why we're here to offer what we want and what we need. This is a lot of area up there. It's 5,000 people plus that's going to be affected by this. And if you think it's just Johnson Lane, it's not. It's going to be Stephanie, it's going to be all the side streets, it's going to be Fremont, it's going to be East Valley. These truck drivers will take whatever route they can. There's nothing that's going to stop them except you folks and we're asking you to do it. If it requires suing the BIA, suing the Indians, suing everybody in sight, keep it in the courts for years. NOX can't make money then. They'll give up. They're out there to make money and that's all these other entities want also. As far as I can see, Douglas County will get absolutely nothing out of this to their benefit except a lot of grief and a lot of expenses. And like Mr. Tarkanian said, there will be lawsuits, there will be. And there'll be a lot of them. And like Mr. Ingles said, you lost the last one from Johnson Lane area. So, that could happen again. So, my suggestion is, you take the bull by the horns and go after them first before everybody comes after Douglas County. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Carol Strill and I live in the Johnson Lane area and my husband and I, our home backs up to BLM and we are going to be fully affected by the traffic of these trucks. One thing I want to hit on is, very important to me, is a health issue. Before I moved here with my husband, we came here for a better quality of life. I ended up having a very rare lung disease where I moved from and I spent six months with my pulmonary specialist trying to figure out what it was I had. I had two choices. I either, he thought I had cystic fibrosis or sarcoidosis. I had to end up having, after all the tests, I ended up having to have open lung biopsy surgery just to determine what it was I had. Luckily, obviously, I got the right 50%. But in doing, going through all this, my pulmonary specialist asked me, sarcoidosis is something that they, it's rare, they don't know what causes it even to today. And he asked me, where do you live? And I said, in a very busy area where there's a lot of vehicle traffic, truck traffic. And he said, in all of his studies and whatnot in regard to, sarcoid was his specialty, he told me that it was tire dust and exhaust that probably contributed to my disease. Now, having this mine taking place, which is going to go right past our backyard, I'm starting to get a little bit concerned because sarcoid, sarcoidosis is a disease that you can get over and over and over again. And what I went through, not even being able to blow out a candle, a birthday candle, that's how serious it was for me. I didn't know at the time when I had it before my surgery whether I was going to live or I was going to die. So, now thinking about all the exhaust, all the tire dust, the noise that I'm not going to be able to even sit out on the back porch of my backyard because of this. So, I am really upset about this. And I know, I understand what you're saying about Bing, but all those homes that went in there, went in there after Bing was already there. And people knew that the, that the mine was there. So, you know, I appreciate what you're trying to say, but that doesn't comfort me one bit. I've been living here now for 25 years and now I'm going to have to face that. And there is something we can do. Where there's a will, there's a way. There can be another road rerouted. It only takes, you know, a small amount of people to get that together and do it. And I think that, that, you know, nobody's come up to our house to even try and see what we're going to have to face. So, please, do whatever you can. I know there's a way. You can do it. We, you know, that's why we have you there. Do it for us, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jack Driscoll. I also live right adjacent to where this road and mine is going to go in. I lived up there for 20 years. I understand the need to give BIA back and rec, you know, give the money back for the Indians and what we took from them, but nowhere does it say they take from somebody else. And I think that's, what has been said here is, it's going to cost this county a lot of money, the roads and everything else. There's no benefit that I can see that you've come up with or anybody else has come up with. We've got a study that was done sort of in the blind. There was very little announcement of this going on and it's not a complete study. There are things missing. There wasn't ever a traffic study across the back from the mine to Johnson Lane. They say there is in their report, but if you follow where it says, from the start to the end, it goes three different places. You get to the final place and there's no study there. So, I mean, the study is not complete and it certainly doesn't address a 40-year plan for something. This is a long time and big money, so it's going to affect us all if we don't do something now about it. And I think you have to. And there's two different routes. One on Sunrise Pass Road, which is, is no road at all for the most part, and the other is the final quarter mile of Johnson Lane, which doesn't come under any certification. Those are two places that are nice bottlenecks that you own and you control and you can make every rule you want to about them because nothing else has any jurisdiction on it. And that's the only two places they can get out of there. Weight limits, daily passes, tolls, those don't impede access, they're an economic impediment. Head them where it hurts. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Ron Conway. I'm a resident of Johnson Lane. As for the issue of the letter, I really hope that this board does not send a letter to BIA that throws their hands up in the air and says, just give us some concessions to something is better than nothing. Okay, I want to give you some help and I want to talk about the issue of Johnson Lane. Johnson Lane has been dictated numerous times as a collector road. That's incorrect. This is a map from the NDOT site that shows all the collector roads in Douglas County. Johnson Lane is classified as a collector, a major collector road from 395 to Hayborn. From Hayborn to East Valley, it is a minor collector road. From East Valley to the entrance of the BLM, it is not classified by the state whatsoever, which means it is under your jurisdiction. You can put weight restrictions, you can put whatever you want restrictions on that road as long as there's entrance to the BLM. We have 10,000 pound weight restriction road around the airport. We have no truck restrictions on Motts Lane east of 88. Motts Lane east of 88 is a minor collector road, but it has truck restrictions. These restrictions can be put in and should be put in by this, this county for the safety and health of people in Johnson Lane, which this map dictates as urban area, not commercial. You need to go and look at your own master plan and take care of the people of Johnson Lane. Thank you.
Can you contact?
Absolutely.
Could you, could you also leave us with a copy of that for, for putting that in the record? Thank you.
That is accessible. You go to NDOT, type in Douglas County Collector Roads. The sixth document down that is that map. It shows in black, Johnson Lane to Hayborn is a major. It shows in yellow, Johnson, Hayborn to East Valley is minor. It gives no definition for anything after that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Tracy Lutz and I'm a resident of Johnson Lane. I have a question first. How many of you gentlemen actually listened to one or the other of the two meetings online yesterday? Regarding the EA, on page six, Section 1.4, Agency Purpose and Need, I note that the BIE, BIA's purpose and need is actually stated. I notice that the BLM's purpose and need is stated, but I also noticed that those same elements covered by them are not covered by Douglas County. In other words, your interests are not represented in their document. Note that Douglas County has been designated by the BAE as a cooperating agency. However, Douglas County is not treated equally as is the BLM and other cooperating agency. The County of Douglas is not listed in Section 1.4, Agency Purpose and Need. Notwithstanding, the County of Douglas has not given the opportunity to list its need. Moreover, Douglas County has not offered the opportunity to identify its purpose. Speaking for myself, indeed speaking for the community, I shall endeavor to provide these county criteria. The need on land use goal number six, to identify particular areas within Douglas County where the residents desire to preserve or develop distinctly rural communities. Purpose on the LU Policy 2.4, Douglas County shall protect residential neighborhoods from encroachment of incompatible activities or land uses which may have a negative impact on residential living environment. Regarding the EA 2022 proposal, it would appear to the most casual observer that all three agencies are equally involved with the proponent's application. The BIA regarding the work site, the BLM for access from work site to terminus of Johnson Lane roadway and the County of Douglas, from the terminus of Johnson Lane roadway to Nevada State Highway 395. Question, why was Douglas County omitted from the list of cooperating agency with its need and purpose? Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, afternoon, morning, I guess, gentlemen. My name is AJ Erzick for the record. I live in the Johnson Lane community. Our entire community is extremely concerned regarding the proposed project, specifically the truck route indicated in the current proposal EA, April 2022. The primary question is this, what direct benefit and lifestyle improvement will the people of Johnson Lane experience by the proposed painted rock mine truck route? While I understand, and in fact, I do not object to the property holder enjoying the benefit of possessing parcel CC-346 and 378, I don't believe this benefit should be at the full expense of the nearby long-established residential community. The proponent speaks of additional costs related to alternative routes. Of course, it is expected to cost more to transport a product over a longer distance for distribution. However, I don't believe it's professionally ethical or fundamentally fair to expect the local residents to sacrifice in order to offset these costs. The PRM is clearly a business opportunity. It's a business venture. As such, the economics should have been determined prior to submitting the application to BIA. If, after a viability analysis, the business continues to pursue its venture, it may require adjustments to their process to remain profitable. This is basic business management. However, the success of this venture should not depend on nor require the disruption of the public in order to preserve the business's competitiveness. The proponent's candor has been and continues to be in question. The enduring question is this, where is it established that what the proponent demands the residents in the county must obey? Where is that established? If the proponent has hastily premature agreement, made a hastily premature agreement or promised to the landholder regarding profit margins, Johnson Lane residents should not be compelled to suffer the proponent's mistake. An important consideration is this, the current quality of life consistently enjoyed by everyone for 30 days per month. If the proponent truck, proposed truck route goes into effect, the quality of life will be reduced to four days per month. Four days per month. That's 3.5 decades or 12,775 days. Instilled in our nation's founders, my grandparents, my parents, and great coaches in school, the fundamental American principle of fair play became an integral part of my life. I firmly believe that this PRM transportation... I firmly believe that this PRM transportation route is an excellent opportunity to exercise this longstanding traditional American principle. Fair play is clearly required. Indeed, it is expected. Therefore, the question still remains, what direct benefit and lifestyle improvement will the people of Johnson Lane experience by the proposed Painted Rock Mine? It is sincerely our desire of our community that you reconsider the proposed Johnson Lane Truck Route in favor of a desert alternative. Thanks.
How, how long do you think that would take? I, I've allowed three minutes for everybody so that we could access that, but, okay, go ahead. I'll allow you to readdress it.
I wanted to put this in before and I wasn't able to. Evidently, Douglas County has a land use policy 2.4 where Douglas County shall protect residential neighborhoods from encroachment of incompatible activities on land uses which may have, you know, a negative effect against it. So, I just wanted to throw that in. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comment here in chambers? Everybody has been given, or, and, and Mr. Jackson, you were given three minutes during opening public comment as well as, as during this item. So, I would ask you to, you know, if you have additional comments, please submit them to the record and, and we'll, and we'll publish those. So, at this time, we'll go to public comment online. Ms. Johnson, is there any public comment online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. At this time, there's no public comment online.
Thank you. We'll bring it back to the board for further discussion. Mr. Tarkanian?
I like most of Patrick Kates's letter, Mr. Kates's letter. I just don't think we should make it the alternative that if they approve it, we want money from that excavation agreement. I don't think that should be the initial focus of our letter. It should be the focus of protecting the health and welfare of our citizens and communities.
We have, we have our Public Works manager here, Phil Richter, and we have our Roads Division manager, John Herb, and we have our legal counsel here in Sam Taylor. So, I would, Mr. Richter and Mr. Herb, if you could join us up here for a minute, because I have a couple of questions regarding our roads and, and our legal aspects of that. So, anyways, I need to know the difference between collector roads versus arterial roads. I, I understood that Johnson Lane was an arterial road versus a collector road. Perhaps you could clarify that for us. In addition to that, I'd like to know what the legal authority is that we have in regards to access to our county roads. Now, as I understand, this area, the BIA parcel and the BLM land, even though they're designated as BIA and BLM, they're still within the geographical boundaries of Douglas County. Am I correct on that, Mr. Taylor? Okay, so it's not like they're coming off of, off of non-county property to county property? Is that, is that right?
Sam Taylor, Douglas County DA's office, for the record. Yes, correct. The location of the Knox Mine is within the boundaries of Douglas County, but it is also on federal land. And federal land in terms of trust, BIA has a trust obligation with respect to this particular property, even though it is privately owned.
Okay. So, perhaps you folks can address the question of our authority over the access to our, from the BLM land or the BIA BLM land to our county roads and the difference between a connector road versus an arterial road or what, what the designation here is of Johnson Lane.
For the record, John Herb, Douglas County Public Works. The resident is correct. Johnson Lane is considered a major collector from 395 up to Hayborn and then minor collector from there on out, up to Fremont. Classifications of roadways are set by FHWA through the approval of the state's DOT. What it does is the classification will limit when a development comes in, what type of access spacing is required. So, like a new road, how far, what kind of spacing required. The other thing, what, having it designated as a collector or a major collector or a minor collector, it makes the road a federal aid road. So, those roads are now eligible for federal funding in the future for grants and repairs, whereas local roads are not eligible for federal funding. That came very apparent during the flash flooding and we had FEMA come out and we looked at different roads. Their question was, is this a federal aid road? Is it a collector or minor collector road? So, that's kind of the definition of what classifications, collector, minor collector. Federal aid roads are minor collector on up to arterials, to highways, to freeways. So, that's, that'll answer, I hope that answers your question on the classification of the road. As far as access to the public lands, it, that Johnson Lane is signed as public lands access. I believe I'll refer to counsel on this, but there is NRS requirements to maintain access to public lands. That was revised in the last legislation. I cannot tell you exactly what the requirements are, but there is an NRS statute that requires access to public lands to main, existing access to main, be maintained or remain open. Can I have any further questions from you? There was quite a few of them from you.
Well, I, I'm questioning, so, the original Johnson Lane was, was built by the state, if I'm not mistaken. And were they, was that Johnson, am I mistaken on that?
As far as, I know, yes, that's, that is correct. And then in the year 2000, the county did a two and a half inch overlay from 395 up to Fremont on that section. We have since done several chip seal projects, one as recently as 2020. That chip seal was from Vicki up to Fremont.
Okay. So, do we have any legal authority to limit or prevent access to the BLM land on that section of Johnson Lane between, I guess it is Fremont and, and the BLM land? And I'm not sure that you necessarily can answer that question. I think maybe legal counsel has to. Mr. Taylor? No?
Yeah, Sam Taylor, again, for the record, Douglas County District Attorney's Office. Restricting access in terms of permanent restriction for Knox, I do not believe Douglas County has the authority to do that. There are inherent problems associated with that, including the strong likelihood of a lawsuit involving a regulatory taking as a result of that, because the restriction in access would be directly related to the activities for Knox, one specific entity or individual. And you have to have more than just a desire to do this. You have to have a compelling reason to do it. In addition, none of the code provisions that I have looked at and examined, including NRS provisions, specifically authorize this board to take action to, to close a particular road permanently to particular traffic. You can, under Douglas County Code 1016030, limit the speed limit on the road. Currently, Johnson Lane from 395 to Vicki Lane is set at 45 miles an hour, but this board does have authority under the NRS to restrict the speed on that road. In addition, 1008050, subsection A, authorizes local traffic to utilize Johnson Lane from one end to the other. And under current code, you cannot restrict that access. In addition, under subsection I, entities can leave and return from their business and use our roads for that purpose. And that would qualify, in this particular case, Knox is conducting business on that particular road. And, you know, there, if, if you could show through, like, taking core samples, perhaps, that the road from like, say, for example, Fremont to the end where, where it intersects with BLM property is unable to sustain the truck traffic, you could potentially put in weight restrictions on that particular road and not allow access unless perhaps making a condition that Knox would have to contribute to improve that portion of the road. Unfortunately, right now, trucks have been utilizing Johnson Lane for the most part from one end to the other, including local traffic. So, it's a difficult argument to make that you need to, all of a sudden now, basically establish a new requirement specifically for Knox. We would need proof of that. And that therein lies the problem. You need to be able to show without a doubt that the road is unable to handle that particular traffic for those weight restrictions.
Mr. Chairman?
I, I was afraid you were going to give us those answers. So, Mr. Commissioner Noah says?
Question for you. Do you have any idea the, how much weight those trucks are going to be hauling? I've heard estimates from 80,000 pounds. That's my first question.
So, the state of Nevada has a legal load limit. So, they would be accessing a state highway from there and would be required to meet the legal load limit. I believe it's 20,000 pounds per axle. So, it's, while the overall truck may be 80,000 pounds, it's the axle weight that's directed down into the pavement from each axle and set of tires is what is considered a legal load.
Okay. So, you're saying 20,000 pounds. What's the, is, is, can we impose a weight limit less than 20,000 pounds on Johnson Lane from all the way down to 395?
With, John Herb, for the record, with justification, yes, we could limit the legal load limit on, on the roadway. As counsel, Mr. Taylor was talking about, there is exceptions to, to that as far as local trips are concerned.
I didn't get the last part. As far as what?
So, legal load limit or reducing the load required on the, I mean, that's specifically singling out trucks. We have in our county code, exceptions to a truck route on whether it's a local trip or the business resides on that, on that existing street. So, there is that, we'd have to, I guess, I'd refer to counsel on whether or not we can do that completely.
Okay.
All right. Then, then in order to really establish what the weight limit is, we'd have to do core samples on that road?
As part of our review of the EA, we requested that the applicant do core samples and, and geotechnical research through a third-party engineering firm to determine what's actually built out there. You know, not as built and what's actually on the ground are not always accurate. So, we wanted the applicant, we requested the applicant to do that throughout the Johnson Lane roadway.
And are there any results from that yet?
They, that's part of the discussion that was in the letter, that they did not feel like they were required to do those studies for us.
And I'm going to build some more here. When was Johnson Lane built?
The original construction, I don't have it off, I don't have that information available.
You think it was around 20 years?
But it was, it was built, I believe, in the 60s as far, as far as being paved.
In the 60s. And in that time?
When NDOT actually did the, came in and, and did the paving, I'm not sure. I haven't been able to find the actual plans.
So, we had a base road in the 60s and over time, we had to put in, you said, a two and a half inch cover?
In year 2000, there was, yes, a two and, a two and a half inch overlay was constructed from 395 to Fremont.
And, and also since then, we said we put some chip on it?
Yeah, there's been annual maintenance as far as chip seals on the, through the years.
We're saying then that the very top part of this road is susceptible to wear? I mean, extensive wear, if you're doing that on an annual basis?
Yeah, there's local traffic, there's existing traffic. The road has, has wear on it. There's been some flooding on the lower portion near the industrial park and some utilities gone in. So, yes, over time, the roadway has, the life of it has degraded, of course.
So, now, if we have that chip on top now and we start running 180 trucks across that every day, one, one way fully loaded, other way empty, we're going to get more wear than we would have before the trucks came, would be ostensibly there.
Yes, increase in traffic is increase in wear and tear on the, on the roadways. A chip seal averages, average life of a chip, chip seal will last about seven years before we have to come in and do it again.
And what does that cost?
I think we, when we chip sealed it in 2020, that section of the road was about $70,000. In 2020 costs, oil's gone up quite a bit. So, maybe 100, 150,000 to do a chip seal for that section of road. And now, again, that was only from Vicki Lane to Fremont.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tarkanian, you had?
I have a couple rhetorical questions since that term has been thrown out there for you, Mr. Taylor. Compelling state interest would be the health and safety of, of the community, right, in the neighborhood? Obviously, yes.
It can be. I'm not saying it definitively is in this case, but it can be.
Yeah, and that's, that's why judges get paid the big bucks. They get to determine these type of deals. Would it be a jury trial or a judge trial determining state interest, protecting that residential community from 120 highly weighted trucks traveling through their neighborhood?
I, I can't speculate what type of trial it would be at this particular juncture.
Well, they tell you if there's, I mean, there's certain things you get jury trials for, there's some you get a judge trials for.
It depends on the nature of the claim and, and what's filed. So, I, I'm not willing to go there at this particular time.
I just think we'd have a better chance at a jury trial, because I think people sitting on the jury would understand that it may be a little bit better than the bottom line of a judge. So, this is my real question I wanted to ask. There are restrictions from trucks driving on Douglas County roads, correct?
That's more of a John Herb question, I think.
John Herb, Mr. Herb. Are there restrictions on trucks driving on certain roads in Douglas County?
Yes, there is. And you can find those roads in the Douglas County Code Title 10.
One of those would be Dresslerville and where it goes down to the 395?
Yes, there's restrictions on Dresslerville going down to 395 due to load, a load limit on the bridge over the Carson River.
Well, it's not just that. It's they only allow for deliveries and so forth, ones that are coming in for direct business as opposed to a thoroughfare, correct? Connecting to the 88 or the 395? You don't want those big trucks coming through Centerville all the way down to Dresslerville just because it's a quicker way to go. And that's why we have the prohibition there. It's only for deliveries, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So, as I see, and once again, as I read this agenda item, it's a discussion to provide public comment from the Board of County Commissioners to the BIA regarding their environmental assessment. So, our real decision today as a Board of Commissioners is not the ability to, to approve or deny this project, but only as to whether or not this board wishes to take the opportunity to provide public comment to the BIA on the environmental assessment. Am I reading that correctly, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Sam Taylor, for the record. Yes, that is the action for which this board may take today under the open meeting law, and that is to provide comment to the BIA, what's the scope and nature of those comments that you would provide. It cannot be used as a purpose to vote on whether or not to deny use of the road to Knox at this particular point. Knox at this particular point, although that matter could come back at a, you know, at another meeting if the board so chooses.
Okay. I just want to make sure that the board is completely aware of what our abilities are today based on the agenda item and OML. So is there any other further discussion by the board in this regard? Okay, Mr. Commissioner Rice?
I have a question for our county manager. I've read this letter at least a dozen times. I don't see anything in here that acquiesces to anything. And it looks to me like what we are doing is expressing our concerns over what they have approved and asking them to reevaluate their conclusions. Is that correct?
For the record, Patrick Cates, yes, that was the intent of the letter.
Thank you, sir.
So Commissioners, if there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion regarding the opportunity to provide public comment based on the letter that Patrick Cates has drafted and additional comments from the public and what is submitted into the record. Commissioner Rice?
Mr. Chairman, I will go ahead and make the motion. I, I move that we direct staff to prepare a letter to BIA expressing the board's public comments on the pending environmental assessment for the proposed Paint and Rock Mine.
Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Ingles to provide public comment from the Board of County Commissioners based on staff's recommendations and other public comment that's been submitted by not only the board but also by the public. Is that the way I understand it? And seconded by Commissioner Ingles. Any further discussion on that particular motion? Since seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. So, thank you very much, and we really appreciate the public taking the opportunity today to express their, their concerns and enter that into the record and hopefully maybe, maybe this can have some impact on having them open their ears again. Not only that, as I indicated earlier, Congressman Amade's office is working also to, to try to continue to address this issue. Since in the hours closing in on noon, rather than getting into another issue before noon, I'd like to go ahead and take a recess now and reconvene the Board of County Commissioners May 19, 2022, meeting at 1:00 PM. With that, we'll go into recess. Thank you. And we-
Recording stopped.
I would prefer to have finished the last hour as I discussed.
So I will call back into session from recess. The May 19th, 2022 meeting of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. We are fortunate to have Ms. Willoughby and Mr. Lance Holman from Holman Capital here currently. So it's been requested that I move item eight up to the next item on the agenda. So we're going to accommodate that. And at this time then, item eight is for presentation only. It's a presentation on potential financing options for the construction of a... The Judicial Law Enforcement Center is indicated on the agenda. And this is being conducted by our Chief Financial Officer, Sir Terry Willoughby, and Mr. Lance Holman from Holman Capital. You have the floor.
Thank you, Terry Willoughby, for the record. I have Lance Holman of Holman Capital with here today. This is just a presentation to start talking about the process of how we're going to finance JLEC. So no decision making here today, just some information about the process and what his company does, and some information on interest rates. And I've known Lance for a number of years and done some projects with him together in the past, going back quite a ways. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lance, and he'll give you the overview. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Lance Holman. I'm president of Holman Capital Corporation. And I've been asked by Ms. Willoughby to give a brief overview of financing options, talk about the market interest rates, and what you can anticipate as we move forward, as our economy shifts a little bit. So it's very informal. Feel free to chime in and ask any questions as needed. A little bit of background on our company first. Holman Capital Corporation, we... Our vision is to solve some of the most complex issues facing America and to improve the quality of life of all Americans. We not only provide capital, but we also provide ideas to governments, educational institutions, and health systems in the United States. A little bit about what we finance. So we finance the full gamut of assets that a public agency would acquire, and we only specialize in public sector agencies. All of your energy, so your solar, your wind farms, your HVAC, your boilers, your chillers. On the equipment side, your aircraft, your 911 systems, your patrol cars. On the infrastructure side, the water treatment plants, the pipelines, the water meters. And on the real property side, your justice centers, your police stations, your schools, and your administrative facilities. What is our value proposition? We endeavor to deliver to our clients customized financial solutions. We offer public sector expertise, financing transactions as small as 250,000 up to 100 million, financing terms up to 30 years. And there's some strategies that you can use that you don't really need to go 30 years, and you can save yourself quite a bit of money. But I think this is where we really shine, is customization of the payment structures. We can do interest only. We can do level principal and interest, like the mortgage on your homes. And you can also do escalating payments. It's like the first five years of payment is X, and then the next five years is X plus one, and then X plus two. And what that does is that allows you to reduce your interest expense and reduce your overall cost. As the previous slide stated, we finance all municipal asset classes. We've simplified the documentation and eliminated the need for bond counsel on the client side and expensive legal advice for transactions. And then quick funding. We can fund a transaction start to finish in 30 to 45 days. Now, when you're looking to acquire an asset, you essentially have two options. A, you can use your cash, or you can use some form of financing. Couple of things to consider when you're thinking about a cash financing strategy. Number one, the further the project is into the future, two years, three years, four years, the more difficult it is to estimate the project costs. The Federal Reserve Bank of the United States has been pumping trillions of dollars into the U.S. economy for the past 40 years. That's very inflationary. And so you should expect rising labor and material costs, and it's been further exacerbated by the pandemic now. If you hold your assets longer on your balance sheet, and then you look at your income statement and you identify those assets, you'll notice that you have higher operating and maintenance costs associated with those assets. When you have a change in your leadership of your governing body, and new people come online with new ideas, priorities, and objectives, there's a competition for those cash resources. Now, I'm the first person to say take as many grants as you possibly can get. But just keep in mind, while you're waiting on the grant, your labor and material costs are rising, eating into the net benefit of your grant. But bar none, the number one issue with cash financing is that it depletes your reserves, and your reserves are your lifeline. And so when you look at cash financing as a strategy in its totality, it can deliver a lower return on capital for the public agency. Now here's a slide that really illuminates the point that we're attempting to make. In this example, we have municipal projects and the cost of waiting. In this example, you have... In this example, you have a hypothetical transaction of $10 million today. And you get around to it several years later and the price has escalated to $13.4 million. However, you could borrow the money today at $10 million, lock in the price of your project, go ahead and pay the 1.9 million in interest expense for a total outlay of 11.9 million. Thus, you're saving 1.5 million to your bottom line. And so your acquisition strategy could be to acquire your assets today at a lower price. Go ahead and pay the interest over the life of the asset. This will improve your cash flow and generate savings to your bottom line. So why would you consider financing your project? Well, today you can get 100% project funding. That's all your design costs, construction costs, and inspection all rolled into the financing. As I indicated earlier, the Federal Reserve Bank has been pumping trillions of dollars into the economy for the past 40 years, and that increase in the supply of money has driven down interest rates. But when you drive down interest rates, your asset prices go up. And so the question is, how do you optimize your budget? So imagine that you had $1,000 and you can go out and do one project for $1,000. But reimagine you have $1,000 of cash flow. And you can take 20% of that cash flow and apply it to Project A and Loan A. And now take another 20% and apply it to Project B and Loan B. And now you can have three, four, five projects going at the same time, but most importantly, locking in the price for each one. We believe this will increase your savings. And there will be an escrow account for Project A and Loan A, a separate escrow account for Project B and Loan B, thus enabling you to manage your inflows and outflows at the project level. Now, when you're considering bond financing versus direct lending, this offers a pretty good comparison. Depending on the state we're in, I believe Nevada has limited GO notes up to a limit. So if you exceed those limits, it would require voter approval. Bonds offer very competitive rates, but you do not know what the interest rate is on the bond until the day you sell the bond. It's kind of like buying an airline ticket or buying gasoline. You don't know what the price of that purchase is until the day you actually drive up to the pump and pump the gas. Now additionally, when you create a bond transaction, you have to go out and hire a team of finance professionals to market and sell your bonds. So that's the rating agency, the trustee, the underwriter, the high-priced legal, and you've got the financial advisor and ongoing disclosure. So all of those fees have to be rolled back into your total costs. It's an excellent product. However, it's really geared for very large financings, you know, 50, 100, 200 million dollar deals. Those are really attractive for bond financings because you can spread your cost over a wider base. Additionally, bonds come with increased restrictions. And the number one restriction is that the bondholder, i.e. the investor, wants a period of time where you cannot pay off the bonds early. So let's say you want to go out and borrow money for 30 years. They may have a lockout provision that says for the first 10 years, you cannot pay off the bonds. Well, that is restrictive to your balance sheet. Now, when you look at direct lending, no voter approval is required. Why? Because we're not raising taxes. We're looking at your existing revenues minus your expenses, plus your reserves, and we're lending off of those numbers. We have to offer competitive rates to you to compete with the bond world. But here's another important point, especially in a rising rate environment like today. We offer a 30 to 45 day rate lock. When we present you with a proposal, we'll hold that rate firm for 30 to 45 days so that you can move this item through your governing body approval process, which means that the interest rate in the proposal will match the interest rate in the final financing contract. You did not price it at the pump. Minimum fees. You're probably looking at $10,000 to $20,000 in total fees irrespective of how much you borrow. Again, transaction size is up to 100 million. And less restrictions. You have the right to pay off us, the lender, on any scheduled payment date in full at the purchase option price. So that gives you maximum flexibility on your balance sheet. And then finally, quick funding 30 days. So here's an example that kind of lays out what your true cost of funding is. In this hypothetical example, you have a bond for 5 million. You've got direct loan for 5 million. You can see that the bond pricing is slightly less expensive at 2.5% versus 2.7. They both have a 10-year financing term. They both have 12 monthly payments. But this is where they differ. Here you have all these additional fees that you incur when you issue a bond, and those fees have to be added back into your total costs. And when you compare the two now, you can see where direct lending is slightly more attractive. Additionally, this $78,000 has to come from someplace, and it typically comes from the amount of funds that you borrow. So if you're borrowing 5 million minus the 78,000, you're actually receiving 4,921,000 compared to 4,995. Now, when you're looking at your true cost of funds, you would compute your 4,921,000 dollars, and you would look at these annual cash outflows of 47,000 and change. And your true cost of funds when you solve for your IRR will be a 283 and not a 250 versus a 272 and a 270. Now, in full transparency, this 10-year financing term, if you push this out 20 years, 30 years, then these fees have less impact on your true cost of funds. And lastly, you don't know again what this price or interest rate will be until the day you sell your bonds versus this one is fixed. Market interest rates. So to look at market interest rates in the United States, you have to look at the U.S. Treasury market. This is the benchmark, and this is what every instrument in the debt world is priced off of. And we study this every day. So we looked from 1950 up until today. And if you go back to 1950, the United States government had $257 billion in debt outstanding. By 1971, that number had grown to 398 billion in debt outstanding. But something happened in 1971. We converted from the gold standard to what's called fiat currency, which is a fancy Latin term for "let it be done." Essentially, we allowed the dollar to float. But a number of things have happened in the United States since 1971. We had the oil embargo. We increased our military spending. We increased our social spending. We got involved in a couple of wars. We had the mortgage crisis. And now we've had the pandemic. And today, and this number's probably about a week old, today the United States has 30.4 trillion in debt outstanding. Now, this may be a little bit of a disconcerting number, but keep in mind we're borrowing at 2%. The federal government was borrowing at 2% here. They were borrowing at 4% here. The second point is to look at U.S. monetary policy and what is the policy and their strategy. The strategy in the United States is to keep interest rates low. And if we keep interest rates low, then we can increase our debt. We can increase it with inexpensive debt. We can take the proceeds and invest it in people, plant, and equipment, the American people. And we control inflation through the Federal Reserve Bank by raising and lowering short-term interest rates. Now, there's two other wild cards that are occurring in the United States right now. Number one is the pandemic and China's zero COVID policy. If you take those exports to the United States offline, then the remaining supplies around the world goes up in price. So that's why you're seeing prices of everything going up. The second issue is the war in Ukraine. If Russia provides 14% of the world's oil supply and you remove that from the oil supply and don't replace it temporarily, you're going to have high energy prices. That's why you're going to have $5, $6, $7 gasoline in the United States. And so these issues are temporary, but they're impacting interest rates today. And then the last issue is our population. So you go from 1950 up until today, the U.S. population is at 331 million people. And if you ask the average American, what would they prefer to have? A job or low debt? They would pick a job. So our strategy, as you can see, is to take the inexpensive debt and invest it back into the American people. So this slide really illuminates what has happened since January 1st of 2000. The green line represents the 20-year rate, and that's controlled by investors like yourself. The purple line is controlled by the Federal Reserve Bank. So if you go back to January 1 of 2000, the 20-year rate was at 7%. And as you can see, this is the increase in the money supply and interest rates have steadily come down. Now, when the purple line touches the green line, that is a recession. So here in 2008, we had the mortgage crisis. And you can see the Federal Reserve Bank sent interest rates down to zero. And we basically stayed down at zero for the next 13 years. And we printed a lot of money and we called it quantitative easing. Toward the end of the Obama administration, rates went up a little bit, but we were at zero. There wasn't anywhere else to go. And then they went up a little bit more during the Trump administration, was still off the highs. And then they came down a little bit. And then the COVID crisis hit in March of 2020. So the Fed responded and lowered short-term rates back down to zero. And they've stayed down to zero for the past two years. But over the last 90 days, the Federal Reserve Bank has changed its posture towards inflation. And so you can see that mortgage rates went from 2.5% to 5% today. So everything is... The price of money is going up so that we can begin to bring inflation prices down. But remember, we have those other two extraneous issues, the war in Ukraine, and we have a trading partner in China that isn't employing as many people to get products out of their factories. Now, if you look at it on a more short-term basis, right before the pandemic, you go from January 1st of 2020 to present day. Remember, the green line is the 20-year rate, and the purple line is the one-year rate controlled by the Fed, Federal Reserve Bank. Here you can see one-year treasuries were at 1.5%. They immediately were lowered to zero, and we stayed at zero for the next two years. And over these last 90 days, you can see rates have really, really began to spike up. On the green line, it was at 2.25. The 20-year rate was at 2.25. It went below 1%. We began to shelter in place. We began to receive federal stimulus dollars, look for a vaccine, disseminate that vaccine. And now you can see the economy beginning to open. Here you have the Omicron variant and the other variants in the market. And now you can see these rates beginning to go up. If you look at the narrow gap between the purple line and the green line, we didn't have much inflation then. But if you look at the purple line and the green line, when we flooded the market with $6.5 trillion of new capital to save jobs in America, which was a bad hand, but it was a hand that needed to be dealt, we got back to full employment, but the trade-off is inflation. So in closing, what is our Holman Capital advantage? We offer public sector expertise, competitive rates, term loans, master financing agreements, a streamlined process, and quick funding. We have a number of resources available to the public and to you. We have webinars. We write white papers on the issues important to the public sector. We have product sheets, and we're always available for in-person and one-on-one consultation. I've been doing this for about 30 years now. I've worked for some of the largest banks in the world, JP Morgan, U.S. Bank, and SunTrust Bank. And there wasn't a company that focused on small and medium-sized public agencies. And I presented this to my bosses 13 years ago, and they told me not to do it, that they wouldn't do it. And we went out and created this company, and we've thrived since then. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Ingles?
Just to let you know, sir, where I'm coming from. I'm an advocate of Adam Smith, Hayek, the Chicago School, and Milton Friedman. And right now, there's people who are trying to manipulate the capital markets. Is your organization in any way associated with BlackRock, Vanguard, or State Street Bank?
No. Our capital comes from community banks in the United States. If you look at the banking market, sir, there are two types of financial institutions. There's the large banks like JP Morgan, and there's the smaller community banks. The community banks control about $4 trillion in the United States, but they are not very active in the public sector space. And so we created a company in... Between the municipality and the investor, and we created a company in the middle that we originate these loans, we underwrite them, we price them, and we certify them with a legal opinion. And then we co-invest in those loans with community banks across the United States.
So in other words, you're pretty pure capitalistic.
I'm a pure capitalist.
Okay, not a politician. You're not involved in any way with ESG, are you?
No.
All right. That's a good start. Thank you.
Commissioner Nocat, any questions? Commissioner Rice?
So I had a couple of comments that I wanted to make. We're not taking any action today. This is in reference to, as Ms. Willoughby brings forward, a presentation on potential financing options. And that's a big word, potential financing options for the construction. And I think we need to change our nomenclature there or the wording there from Judicial Law Enforcement Center to Judicial Center versus Law Enforcement Center. It's my understanding, and I know that we're going to be talking about it in other areas today in other agenda items, but I think we all recognize the need or hopefully the community recognizes the need that we have a current Judicial and Law Enforcement Center on Buckeye that is a 40-year-old building and is outlasted. It's really... It's usefulness and become an incredibly crowded system or center. So I think the vision here is to take a look at the potential purchase of property that we can relocate at least the judicial branch that's currently in our JLEC center, including not only the courtrooms but the district attorney's offices as well, into a new facility that would accommodate the ability of our sheriff's department and our law enforcement community to expand in its current building rather than building a completely new jail and law enforcement center. So this is somewhat of the first step is to, if we're looking at that potential, we're going to have to identify methods of financing that process. The eventual or possible move in looking at the possibilities of the need to consolidate other community county offices to one central location, that still needs to be wrapped into a discussion of the strategic plan of our community and whether or not that's a feasible program to consider as well because we're currently spread out amongst other... A lot of different locations within the county. And so that's why I believe this presentation was brought forward to us. It's not going to require any action, but it's just to give us as commissioners an opportunity to look at different potential financing options should we want to go forward with that process. Have I said all that right, Ms. Willoughby?
Terry Willoughby, for the record, that's absolutely correct. This is just one option that we're bringing forward. This is a very straightforward option, in my opinion. But we wanted to get it in front of the board and also give you information about rising costs of construction and increasing interest rates, all those fun things, and start having the discussion sooner rather than later so it doesn't come as a surprise. I don't want to just drop something on. And I thought it was a lot of good information that he presented as well.
Any other comments from the commissioners? Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation. I think it was very informative and at least us and the public have something to look at going forward.
Thank you for the opportunity.
So at this time, we'll...
So at this time, we'll move back to agenda item number two for possible action. Discussion on the possible revisions to Title 20, Appendix B of the Douglas County Consolidated Development Code, including but not limited to changes to Table 903.2.2 and Section 903.2.4 related to the installation of automatic fire sprinklers in residential construction of less than 5,000 square feet. And that's being brought forward by myself at the request of others in our community. So to try to set the table on this, this building code was put into place, if I'm not mistaken, back in 2019 by a board of the, by a vote of the Board of Commissioners. Am I correct on that date, 2019? Since, yeah, okay, so, since that time, we have encountered some, what I conceive or perceive as unintended consequences of that process. And in 2021, I believe it was February or March of 2021, this board approved a, the ability of a manufactured home to come before us and apply for a waiver of the processes of having to install automatic fire sprinklers in their, in their homes. And we passed that. Since that time, I think we've had three or four opportunities to discuss that as residents have come forward. The, the thing I was looking at is, in this regard, is the, the consequences that were unintended necessarily of what happened to South County in the Tamarack Fire, where we lost 12 families, lost their homes, some of those being stick-built homes, some of those being manufactured homes. And there was no amount of mitigation that could have possibly taken place in those residences or even the surrounding areas. Those 12 homes went up in a matter of seconds, and, and no amount of water, no amount of fire retardant or, or things of that nature would have mitigated or reduced the ability of those homes to withstand. So anyways, and we still have a number of, of residents down there that are trying to rebuild, but the cost involved in, in putting automatic fire sprinklers in certainly would not have caused these homes to continue to stand. And, and yet now, because of this code, they're required to put in for automatic fire sprinklers, and no matter how extensive of an automatic fire sprinkler they do put in, still won't prevent those houses from going up again should, should we encounter a wildfire in that, in that area or any other place in the, in the county. The cost, as I see it, as a commissioner, are anywhere from, in a manufactured home, anywhere from $20,000 up in a stick-built home, depending upon the size, close to $50,000, with no appreciable, as I understand it, no appreciable increase in the value of the home, no reduction of the fire insurance process, and, and certainly wouldn't have kept those houses intact. And so this is causing some, as I see it, unintended consequences. And so I've put this on the agenda to bring it forward, to, to get some discussion amongst us as commissioners, to determine whether or not this is a, something that we need to take a look at and possibly either revise or even possibly repeal. So the action would not be taken today. All this would be is a discussion to ask our Community Development Department to take a look at this and, and come back with possible changes to the, to the code that we can act upon. So that's all we're trying to do today is send, have Community Development take a look at this as, for possible action. So I'll ask my fellow commissioners if there's any questions you have in that regard. Otherwise, then we will go to public comment and then bring it back again. So Commissioner Ingles?
This all came about because of the WUI and some of the conditions that we have here with the zephyr winds up along East Valley. And this is just one component. We were trying to adhere and encompass all of the WUI codes. WUI meaning Wildland Urban Interface, where the homes are starting to come up against the, the flora of the, the land. And this is one component, but we need to come back and look at this as well. There are certain things that can be done in regard to construction. They can use siding called rock wool that is almost impregnable with water, fire won't damage it, and it's a very robust component in the construction rather than just plywood siding, and it's not that expensive. That could help to mitigate these things. Sprinkler systems are expensive, and then they have to be maintained. They can freeze in the wintertime. There's all kinds of things that can happen with them. And it's like Commissioner Gardner said, it's not an absolute assurance that it's going to prevent a house from burning. There are other things that we need to look at, but this is just one component. Thank you.
Commissioner Rice? Yes, oh, I thought you were moving to the microphone.
Mr. Chairman, I think one of the reasons why we established this to begin with was the, the safety factor, both for the resident as well as the responding fire personnel. However, in, in the fires that we have experienced, it does not appear, at least to me, that having a sprinkler in the houses that we lost would have made any difference whatsoever. I, I do know that it is creating a horrendous financial impact on those that did lose houses. Last thing I want to do is to further endanger our, our first responders. I'm not sure what the sprinklers do that, that would reduce their, the threat to them. I do know that we require smoke alarms, heat alarms, alarms for toxic fumes in the house, and I, I think most of us all have, all have those, because it's our own responsibility to take care of our own safety. I, I don't like nanny laws. I don't think nanny laws are appropriate in our society. Granted, there are some people that haven't, be nice, haven't the ability to determine what's best for them when it comes to their own safety. Is that a good way of putting that? But I, I don't like using a shotgun approach or a broad net to bring everybody into the, into the realm when, when it's not necessary. So I think this is something that we, we can at least look at, try to find some way of accommodating those that have already lost so much, and to make things far more reasonable for those that are trying to improve their properties without having to go to the extra cost of having to put in sprinkler systems. Thank you.
Commissioner Nossad?
Yes. I think the sprinkler systems we're, we're talking about here would be internal sprinkler systems, correct? And they're very effective in reducing internal fires. They will not do a thing to ward off a wildfire unless you have external sprinkler system on that thing. And now you're talking about doubling the cost. So if it's, we're talking about having required to put a, a internal sprinkler system in, I would think that it's underkill for a wildfire.
So, thank you. At this time, we will go to public comment. This is an action item. Do I have public comment here in chambers?
Good afternoon, commissioners. For the record, Amy Ray, Deputy Fire Chief and Fire Marshal for East Fork Fire Protection District. As a Fire Marshal for East Fork, we are opposed to changing the code as it currently stands. We believe that residential fire sprinklers are very important in our district. The purpose of a residential fire sprinkler system is to allow the residents time to escape if there is a fire in the home. You do have smoke alarms, and you do have the ability for them to awaken you in the middle of the night. However, in a two-story home or somewhere else where the fire grows so quickly now because of what our internal materials are made of, of our furniture, it takes very little time for that fire to progress and for the resident to be allowed to escape. So it's for the safety of our occupants, which the value of life safety cannot be measured. It's for property preservation, because normally 97% of fires that have residential sprinkler systems are contained to one room. So you do not have a fully engulfed fire of a home, and you do not lose the entire home. Generally, it's just the water damage to that one, to that one room. And the purpose of, another thing that's misguided in the information for residential sprinkler system is only one head goes off at a time. If there's a fire in the living room, the closest head is going to go off in the living room. It's not going, going to go off in the bedroom or anywhere else. This also helps us with our response times. Some of the things that we need to look at when the bill was put into place, SB 477, was our response times. Our response times to some areas in our district are over nine minutes. And when you look at the time that it takes us to get there, that is very crucial in the escape of an occupant and for us to be able to start firefighting activities. It's like putting a firefighter in the house is a residential sprinkler system. We do not have the staff or the ability to get to all areas of our district within a time that would prevent the fire from growing unanimously. So we have topographic challenges, we have the availability of resources, and we have no water in some of our areas. So when we're responding to a fire and we're taking water with us, we only have so much with us, and then we have to go back and we have to find another water source in order to refill and go back and fight the fire again. That can allow the fire to increase in size because we don't have the water capabilities to be there. It also reduces our, our responsibility to go into a house if there, the house is on fire. If there is a sprinkler system and the fire puts the, suppresses the, if the system suppresses a fire, I apologize, then we do not have to send our staff inside to fight that fire at that time. Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. For the record, my name is Patrick Mooneyhan. I am here on behalf of the East Fork Professional Firefighters. I'm here representing President Kevin May, who couldn't be here today. So the East Fork Professional Firefighters, IAFF Local 3726, oppose the proposed exemption of residential fire sprinkler requirements for new homes less than 5,000 square feet and over 1,000 feet away from a fire hydrant. The proposed changes, if adopted, will directly impact public safety, increase insurance loss, and adversely impact the health and quality of, of life of unsprinkled homeowners who experience a residential structure fire. In a residential structure fire, the key to occupant survival is time. The more time someone has increases their ability to exit the structure safely. The longer a person is breathing in smoke from couches, beds, televisions, laptops, and other synthetics commonly found in homes, the less chance they will survive the experience without permanent harm or even survive at all. The chemicals in smoke that kill people are carbon monoxide, hydrogen cyanide, phosgene, and the litany of others, not to mention the burn injuries that are of their, are their own category of horrific. For decades, the residential smoke detector has been the primary means of creating time. However, modern synthetic materials have reduced the warning a smoke detector can provide before conditions in a home become too toxic or hazardous to exit safely. Furnished homes in the 1970s used to have over 15 minutes for a family to safely exit compared to a furnished home today has under five minutes. These facts have been verified by scientific testing from Underwriters Lab, Underwriters Laboratory, and have played out in our collective experience as firefighters over decades. Modern fires burn faster, hotter, and produce more toxic smoke than the fires of the past. Residential sprinklers create time for victims of a house fire, a house fire by quickly applying water to the room of origin, keeping the fire small and reducing the quantity of toxic smoke generated by the fire. The time gained from containing the fire to the room of origin allows us, the firefighters, time to arrive and act both extinguish the fire and rescue any remaining occupants. More importantly, the time gained by the sprinklers combined with a working smoke detector will hopefully allow anyone in the home to react and leave their home themselves. The house, the fire room, and its contents can all be replaced, human lives cannot. In Douglas County, the response time to a house fire in a rural area like Fish Springs or Spring Valley can often be longer than 20 minutes. In that time, an unsprinkled fire will have time to fully ignite or flash over the room of origin, expand into the frame of the home, the attic, and other rooms, and more than likely become fully involved by the time we arrive on the scene. Though we will make every effort to search for and revive anyone who did not escape on their own, the outlook is grim for anyone still in the smoke and, and fire charged home after 20 minutes. Additionally, a fire freely burning that long is exponentially harder to suppress with water. It requires more manpower than, and time than a small fire contained in the room of origin would have been. Repealing this ordinance will at some point result in a rural house built to your code experiencing, experiencing a fire that was much, that was much larger than it otherwise would have been. We can only hope the residents, neighbors, and our members are unhurt in the event. Ultimately, your votes as commissioners impact lives, retain and enforce the sprinkler ordinance for the new homes less than 5,000 square feet and 1,000 feet away from a hydrant. Thank you for your, our reading and considering our position. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, do we have any other public comment here in chambers? Sensing none, Ms. Johnson, do we have any public comment online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. I do have one person in line with their hand raised. Erin, do you have public comment on item number two?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record, and we'll start your time.
Erin West with Nevada Builders Alliance. I want to thank the commissioners for contemplating this issue. I think the, the questions that you brought up about the efficacy of fire sprinklers in the WUI is absolutely on point, and I think it'd be, if, if you were to, to look at going forward with this, might I suggest that we, I've, I've asked this of many fire departments over the years, could we actually get some stats? If we're talking about saving life, how many loss-of-life fires have we had in homes that have been constructed within the last 10 years? Because we all know that the building codes change every three years, and every three years, they get more stringent. What I've seen, and in my experience, granted, this was a few years ago, but I, I put in 11 years in the Churchill Fire Department, and the predominantly, the houses that actually caught fire, that created issues, were typically built in the 50s and 60s. By, by having this ordinance in place, we're not doing anything to preserve those houses. And the reality of the situation is that you're talking about adding $40,000 per house to the cost, to, to the cost of that house, when we've already seen just ridiculous inflationary pressure driving up the cost of housing and making it less affordable at every turn. So just my two cents, but if we could get some actual stats on what houses are catching fire and what is the impact of that, I think it would be beneficial. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. West. Any additional public comment online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. At this time, there's no further public comment online.
Bring it back to the board for further questions and possible motion.
I've just got a question. We got a 5,000-foot limit here, right? Above 5,000, you better put it in, and below 5,000, you don't. So I got a, I got a trailer that measures 49,000, 4,900 square feet, and it's in a WUI. Does the WUI cause us to require a sprinkler system in each of those mobile homes? I'll wait and answer.
If I may. Yes, I, I don't have an answer for that, Mr. Nossad. Yes, I, I don't have an answer for that, Mr. Noasad. So, Mr. Ingles? Yes, of course.
We went round, we went round and round with this. You know, if you're like in 1,000 feet of a fire hydrant, if you're not, and things like that. And it, it does seem a little like overkill, but there might be other things, too, that we can look at. And in conjunction with this, for presentation, I'd like to have our building department do a study on a product called Rockwool. And you can use Rockwool for siding, interior, ceilings, exterior. It's very robust in combating all sorts of things. It's like it says, Rockwool. It, it won't take water. It's a good insulator. So rather than just come with this, maybe we could look at something like Rockwool. Amy, are you familiar with Rockwool? Would you like to talk about it a little bit here?
Not familiar with it.
Well, maybe the county should take a look at it, and East Fork could take a look at it as a product to incorporate in building. I don't think it's as expensive as a sprinkler system, and it certainly, there's no maintenance to it. Just, just a thought. Thank you. Thank you, Amy.
So I'll entertain a motion to ask community development to bring back a, some recommendations in regards to, related to this, Title 20, Appendix B. Motion by Commissioner Ingles.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Noasad to direct community development to come back with possible revisions to Title 20, Appendix B of the Douglas County Consolidated Development Code, including but not limited to changes to Table 903-2-2 and Section 903.2.4 related to the installation of automatic sprinkler systems. Sensing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Thank you. Item number three for possible action.
Amy? You can go on YouTube and, and you can see presentations on Rockwool.
Yeah, thank you. Item number three for possible action, the discussion on the adoption of Resolution 2022-R-060, rescinding Resolution 2020-R-038, Douglas County's Declaration of Emergency Due to the Novel Coronavirus COVID-19 Virus. Gentlemen, the, the only thing I would mention here is that our governor is going to release his emergency powers as of tomorrow, and this is a preemption of, of that. So anyways, I'll leave it at that. Is there any other questions that you folks might have?
Why on earth would we not?
Okay, I will, at this time, go to public comment in chambers. Is there any public comment in chambers? Sensing, okay. Okay, well, that's, that's enough, I guess. And Ms. Johnson, do we have any public comment on, online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. At this time, there's no public comment online.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Resolution 2022-R-060 as presented.
Okay, so, motion by Commissioner Rice, unanimous second by the rest of the board members, for the adoption of Resolution 2022-R-060, rescinding Resolution 2020-O, 2020-R-038, Douglas County's Declaration of Emergency Due to the Coronavirus. Sensing no further discussion, all those in favor by signify, saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Okay, well, now we're making some progress. Item number four. And it looks like Ms. Reed has been in attendance anticipating this one. So, for possible action, discussion to approve the appointment of Brendan Riley to the Genoa Town Advisory Board to fill a vacancy due to the resignation of a member in accordance with County Code 18.02-040 and NRS 245.170. The appointee will serve the remaining unexpired term of May 19, 2022 through December 31, 2022, being presented by interim counting, or interim Genoa Town Board Manager Amanda Reed. Do I have that right? Do I have that title right?
I'm still learning it myself. So I believe it's the, currently the acting Genoa Town Manager. We're still waiting for the board to meet so that they can approve everything going forward.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and board members. For the record, I am Amanda Reed, Acting Genoa Town Manager. And I'm here today before you. Brendan Riley, who is hopefully going to be apported, appointed to the board, wasn't able to be here. He's traveling. So I am here to try to answer any questions you may have as far as moving forward with this appointment.
Commissioners? Oh, wait, your microphone's on, Mr. Noasad. That's why, that's why I thought you.
I have a question.
Okay.
How many applicants did you have?
I believe he was the only applicant, sir.
That was my understanding also. Gee. I'm sorry.
Well, there's a limited, there's a very limited resident base there, too. So anyways, okay, so this is for possible action. Mr. Riley not, not in attendance for question and answers. Do the Commissioners have any other questions?
Yeah. Are, are you prepared to kind of just give us a brief overview of the candidate's background?
Yes, I can tell you what he stated in his email towards us to the board. And I believe it is, if you need to reference it in your packet, I believe it is on page 450 in your packet. However, it reads, "To Douglas County Commissioners and Genoa Town Advisory Board, this is a request for your approval to serve on the Genoa Town Advisory Board through the end of 2022, filling a vacancy now existing on the board. I have lived in Douglas County since 1972, for most of that time as a homeowner in Genoa. Currently, I am a member of the town board's Public Safety Working Group, which has been working on ways to slow down speeders in Genoa and to improve parking, with a goal of making our streets safer for everyone. In the past, I have volunteered for candy dance duties, was an active, I'm sorry, was active in a homeowners group representing the Pioneer Trails subdivision on the east side of Genoa, and many years ago was a member of the Genoa Volunteer Fire Department. I am retired and have time to help my historic community. Thank you for considering my request. Sincerely, Brendan Riley."
Any other questions? Okay, then we'll, this is possible action, so we will go to public comment here in chambers. Is there any public comment here in chambers regarding Mr. Riley's appointment? Sensing none, is there any online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. At this time, there's no public comment online.
Okay, then I'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Brandon Riley to the Genoa Town Advisory Board for the unexpired term of May 19, 2022 through December 31, 2022, as presented.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Ingles, to appoint Brendan Riley to the Genoa Town Advisory Board to fill the vacancy. The term will be from May 19, 2022 through December 31, 2022. Sensing, you ready to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you for your time today.
Appreciate your patience with us today.
I appreciate you taking the time to see me. Have a great day.
Item number five, for presentation only, presentation on the history of plans to remodel the existing Judicial Law Enforcement Center, that you know, more commonly known as the JLEC Center, building to meet the needs of the judicial branch and associated executive branch offices versus the current alternative plan to construct a separate judicial building and subsequent renovation of the existing JLEC building for the sheriff's office and other executive branch offices. This is being presented by County Manager Patrick Kates, and I'm not exactly sure what Mr. McCullough's title is. I don't see him very much, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's project manager.
Project manager. I'll try to remember that. Thank you. Mr. Kates?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just give me one moment to get a PowerPoint going here. And I asked Scott to join me in this presentation, just to give the background to the board on the space needs of the county and, and the long process of work that has gone through analyzing the needs for the judicial branch and the sheriff. He, he's been deeply and intimately involved in all of its iterations and has a great depth of knowledge. Sorry here, what's it trying to do? I went to the wrong place? Sorry, I can't talk and navigate. Okay, so this is obviously the first in a series of Virginia items dealing with the JLEC and the proposal to build a new judicial building. And this is, as you know, presentation only and intended to give you some background of how far we've come and why we're arriving at some of the recommendations that we're making today. So first of all, the existing Judicial Law Enforcement Center, JLEC, was constructed in 1982. That's when it was opened. I believe that project started more like 1980, before it was actually complete. At that time, it had, and still has, two district courtrooms, one justice courtroom, and of course, all of the other court administration, court IT and court support functions included in the facility, on the sheriff's office, including the jail, the district attorneys, constable, juvenile probation, and others. At the time that the building was open, the county's population was a little over 19,000 residents, about 38% of what the current population is today of approximately 50,000 people. The project was intended to meet the county's needs for 20 years, so roughly 2002. So here we are, 40 years later, and we're still in the same building. Multiple renovations have been made to the building over that time, and they've used up all of the existing space. Some of the JLEC deficiencies, the current building, the way it's configured and what the program, programmatic needs are of the occupants. The DA's office has inadequate office and meeting space. They have some personnel housed off-site in leased space. For instance, the Civil Division is in leased space, as an example. There's no secure access for judicial officers. There is no separation for victims and perpetrators of criminal offenses. The sheriff's office has inadequate space for patrol, admin, records, and investigations, and their street enforcement division is off-site. Alternative sentencing has no secure waiting area, inadequate separation of offices and lab facilities. And the building's security, the way it's configured, there's a bottleneck at the entrance to the building. And given the population of the county and how much we have grown, there is a need for an additional district court, excuse me, justice court. So JLEC renovation plans. There have been multiple iterations of the county commission looking at this and providing different direction. But in 2015, there was a needs assessment that recommended a phased renovation and expansion of the JLEC complex. And again, the boards looked at multiple versions of this and sent us, sent us back to, to look at different options. Based on this phased renovation of the existing complex, in 2020, at 10% design, the recommendation was to remodel the existing facility of about 40,000 feet to construct additional facility, about 46,000 feet, as well as construction of a parking garage. The total estimated cost in 2002 was a little over $47 million. I'm sure if you inflation adjusted that to today, that would go up by a few million dollars. And just to give you a brief overview, this is, it gives you an idea of what that was intended to look like. The gray building is the existing, the JLEC, the jail, being in the white area, the offices and courtrooms being in the, in the gray area. The yellow shows the new office space that would be built, and the blue is the parking garage. And I'll tell you, that's what really caught my eye and, and generated a lot of conversation once we had these estimates. Building garages to park cars in a rural area doesn't make any sense at all. It's a very expensive way to park cars. It's suitable for a dense urban environment when you really don't have any choice. But to build it in this situation is just nonsensical. And it was only necessitated by the fact that we have a very small parcel here, and there's just not enough room to provide for additional construction and, and parking. So I talked about the garage. Also, the phased construction approach, that is a very difficult way to renovate a building. It would be detrimental to existing operations. So just picture the sheriff, the courts, all conducting business while various portions of the building were under construction. That's problematic, and it would take a lot of time. And I am certain, based on my experience with the state and overseeing the state's capital improvement project, program, that we would exceed estimates just because of that phased approach. It's, 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 it's an expensive way to build a building. And there really would be room for future growth as well. So, very problematic from that standpoint. So, we started looking around for alternatives. So, building a separate judicial building, it, it would meet all of the needs of the judicial branch. It would provide space for associated offices, such as the district attorney, to allow for full construction without disruption to current operations, and it would provide space for adequate surface parking and public access. And it provides options for future growth. The proposal would be that after the judicial building was completed, then we would look at the existing JLEC building, repurpose that for use by the sheriff and associated offices. The sheriff would keep all of his offices in the existing building, along with the jail. And that provides a lot of options for future growth of the sheriff's office and, and associated programs. It would meet their needs nicely going forward into the future. So the judicial building approach, building that separately, the preliminary cost estimates for that came in at $41.5 million total cost. That's design permitting and construction. That's $6 million less than the estimates for the JLEC renovation. And as I said, the estimates for the JLEC renovation are older, so you'd have to apply inflationary factors, making this approach even more attractive cost-wise. Also, it would still be less when you considered $5 million to purchase land, which we'll be talking about more in the next agenda item. And again, provides for adequate surface parking. the next agenda item. And again, provides for adequate surface parking and for public access. It really provides a lot of flexibility for construction and future growth for the county in general, not just the judicial building. The county needs assessments have shown that many county departments are in need of more space, not just the ones I just mentioned. And this provides us with an option to construct a civil complex in the future. And it will also allow the county to dispose of valuable commercial assets, such as the Mendon Inn that we currently occupy. And I can talk a little bit more about that on the next agenda item. That's my introduction and overview, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Nossat.
The $41, $41,484,541, when was that number generated? Is that the one that came out in 2002?
2020.
20, okay, good. Thank you.
Commissioner Ingles.
When we talk JLEC, that is all of the government offices and everything combined, correct?
So JLEC is not all county offices. That is just the judiciary, the sheriffs, and some associated functions like alternative sentencing, juvenile probation, et cetera. Everybody that's currently housed in the JLEC building today.
What about the future needs for county offices?
Well, that gets into the, I started that down that road, but that really gets into the discussion for the next agenda item about purchasing land and the amount of land that would be available. We wouldn't be trying to address that in this specific construction project, but we would have room for that in the future.
Other questions or concerns? Okay.
I have a question. I do have a comment, sir. This is something that's been needed for a very long time. Our services are so spread out throughout the county that unless you have a roadmap, you have no idea where you have to go to get this permit, that permit, permission for this and permission for that. And by, I'm looking at the future that we can have all of the sheriff's activities in one spot, all of the judicial requirements in another spot with a civic, later on, a civic complex where everybody moves into the same building, so people don't have to, you know, they may have to run the hallways a little bit, but they don't have to run all over town to get their job done. So I think this is something that the citizens of this county deserve, and I think that's something that we should really concentrate on getting accomplished.
Thank you. I see this as, you know, and I identified this quite some time ago, actually, the, as I visited during a tour of the current JLEC Center a couple of years ago, the close proximity, especially in our courtroom area, the close proximity that defendants were coming in contact with plaintiffs, both civil and criminal, was concerning, extremely concerning. And as we've indicated, we've continued to throw money at that building in one nature or another, whether it be renovation of the records department, renovation of courtrooms. We've continued to throw Band-Aids at that building. And so, in talking conversations I've had with Sheriff Coverley, they just, they're bulging at the seams. They don't have room for continuing operations. So the need to address at least the courtroom processes and the district attorney's offices, as you're indicating, we already have, our DA, our Criminal Division is in the, in that current building, and then our Civil Division attorneys are in a different building. So it'd be nice to bring everybody together. So, the only concern I had, and I asked Sheriff Coverley about this, is the movement of inmates from one facility to another. Anytime you have to transport an inmate, it puts into risk not only their safety, but the safety of officers as well. And so, I asked and inquired Sheriff Coverley in that regard, and found out that most of the arrangements that are taking place now are done via Zoom, in electronic manner. And the only time that criminals, so-called criminals, I guess, the defendants, I guess, I have to use the politically correct term, right? They're not criminals until they're convicted, I guess, but the inmates, I guess. He indicates that there wouldn't be a tremendous issue there in moving them to another facility that's within a reasonable mileage to another facility. And so, I'm just, I am very pleased that you brought this forward. We did, and that's actually in the next agenda item, we did identify this in the last budget cycle as a need. And it's definitely, you know, when you start talking about dollars, you start talking about needs versus wants. And this is, in my opinion, in talking with others in the community, a very definite need versus a want. Has probably been a need for quite some time, as you indicated, 2002 is when it was supposed to be, something was supposed to be done, and that can has been, continued to be kicked down the road for 20 years. And so I'm hopeful that we can move forward with something of this nature. So, this is a presentation-only item. If the commissioners don't have any more questions, I guess we, yes, Mr. Kates?
If I may, I did forget my last slide, but you alluded to it. I did just want to make sure it's clear on the record that we've had a working group, if you will, regarding the needs of the judiciary and the sheriff and the DA's, ongoing for a number of years. And, you know, we've sat down and talked through this option versus renovating the existing building, and I can say that the three judges that are occupying that building carefully are currently, the sheriff and the district attorney are all in support of this approach. And as you mentioned, that we did have this discussion last year during the approval of the capital improvement plan, and the board was supportive of that, and appropriated funds to purchase land to this end. So, I know there's been some public comment that this is going too fast, and there hasn't been enough discussion. It's been discussed for years, and most recently last year as part of the budget CIP process. Thank you.
Thank you. And so, Mr. Ingles? Commissioner Ingles?
Mr. McCullough?
Have you been into the trailer over by the airport where they keep the records?
Scott McCullough, yes, I have.
That is a treasure that is just unbelievable. The script writing in those ledgers, and it's the history of the county. And if, during all of this process, this would be more with the, you know, the county offices, and keep in the back of your mind, in the records department, if you could kind of make it like a museum, where there could be glass cases with some of those record books, so that people could see that writing and what was logged in, and kids could go there for visits and things like that. It's just a thought, that's all. Thank you.
Commissioner Nossat?
I guess this is aimed at whoever made up the drawing of the plan to have everything clustered together. How many stories in the, would be in new judicial system courthouse?
Scott McCullough, for the record, we're looking at two stories on a new courthouse, just for security reasons, is what the architects are looking at, and is traditional in that design.
And then I looked over at the car parking garage. That looks to be about three stories.
That would be, if we remodeled the existing JLEC site, what you're not going to do is it'll all be surface parking and subsurface for secure parking in the new facility.
Did you say subsurface?
There will be some subsurface for incarcerated transport, and probably for secure.
Okay. I don't think we have anything else on this item. So, and I believe the two of you are going to address item number six together possibly. So, we'll move on to item number six. I appreciate your presentation on item five. Item six, for possible action discussion, to approve the purchase of 57 acres located on the north side of Buckeye Road, east of the Minden Town Maintenance Facility, assessor's parcel number 1320-28-000-033, for the purpose of constructing a new law enforcement building and future county facilities for $5 million. The parcel is owned by Park Ranch Holdings LLC, and is currently zoned ag 19 acres, and is identified in the Buckeye Farm specific plan as public facilities. Mr. Kates?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me share my screen again. Okay. Whoops. Where are they? Hang on a second. That is the wrong place. I went backwards. Let's try this again. I got it. Okay. So the purchase of 57 acres. So, I talked a little bit before about the land search for judicial building site. Obviously, 57 acres is a lot of land, more than we'd need for just the judicial building, but I think it's a rare opportunity to be really forward-thinking into the future for this community. So our goal in trying to find property, we wanted it to be centrally located and close to the existing JLEC, to minimize that transport issue that you brought up, Mr. Chairman. And we wanted it to be on a major collector road that would provide easy access for the public. We did look at multiple parcels, trying to find something that was size-wise what we were looking for for the judicial building. And that really brought us back to the Buckeye Farm specific plan. It has property identified as public facilities. In the specific plan, it talks about 60 acres, and it is this property that we're proposing that we enter into an agreement to purchase today. It's adjacent to Buckeye Road and the future extension of Moeller Parkway. We entered into some negotiations with, preliminary negotiations with Park Ranch Holding, the owner of the property. And there are three 19-acre parcels identified as suitable for future judicial, for a future judicial building. It's easy for me to say, sorry. I would mention that there's currently work going on to combine those all into one parcel. But currently, we're talking about three parcels. So this is a map. This comes from the appraisal, which is included in your board packet to give you a graphic of where this land is located. So down at the bottom, the road down there, that is Buckeye. To the east side, that is basically a ranch road that goes into Park Ranch headquartered buildings over here on the right. And then you can see this long sloping yellow lines going this way. That is the alignment for the future Moeller Parkway. So we're talking about these three parcels right here, two of them front up against Buckeye, the other ones behind. So the property appraisal, both parties agreed to an appraiser to do the appraisal for the property. As you can see from the packet, it's a very thorough analysis. And the estimated values, and I should say that we're required, as a public entity, to pay an appraised price for property. It's not something we might haggle about in the way we might in the private sector. So we have to go by the appraisal. So, the two parcels that front Buckeye Road were appraised at $2.5 million. The parcel that's directly behind that was appraised at $2.3 million. In our negotiations with Park Ranch Holding Company, they really have a desire to have us purchase all three parcels together. There really wasn't, they really weren't amenable to splitting it off and having us purchase a smaller portion. But they've offered to donate parcel number two, the $2.3 million appraised parcel, as part of the purchase. So basically getting a third of the land for free. That works out to a total of 57 acres for $5 million. That's approximately $88,000 per acre, which I think is very attractive. Benefits, most immediate benefit, it's a suitable location for the new judicial building. The next benefit is land for future county complexes, we've already talked about. We do want to consolidate the county offices in a central location. This is a very long-term proposition. We're not proposing that we run out and start building things for other county facilities out there anytime soon. This is a very forward-looking, long-term proposal to acquire this land, so that we can build that kind of facility in the future as funding and needs allow. I would point out that, just as an aside, Lyon County, they were having some meetings recently about building a judicial complex on land that they purchased, I believe it was 20 years ago, and they purchased it for this purpose. It took them 20 years before they got around to where they were ready to actually build. So I can't say how quickly their other pieces would move, but this is a long-term, we're playing the long game here, for the benefit of the community is the way I see it. And doing that kind of consolidation would have a lot of benefits. It would get people out of leased space. It would get people consolidated together, so the public could come to a central location for county services. It would also give us an opportunity to sell off some county assets that may have high commercial value. And I'm specifically talking about the Mendon Inn, where my office is located, and then a lot of county offices. It's a beautiful building. It's a great building. I'm very happy to have it in office, but that building definitely has high commercial value, and it's something we could dispose of in the future if we were to build county offices on this new property. There's also potential uses, and we could even sell it to other partners. It is designated as public facility in the specific plan. I know, at least initially, the town of Minden has expressed some interest. I believe the Minden Town Advisory Board took a vote that they were interested in this, had some conversations. They may be interested in five acres. We've talked about possibility of them purchasing that over time. I know East Fork Fire District expressed some interest in this property for a future fire station. And I have not talked to the university, but I think there may be some great potential for cooperative extension. As you know, our cooperative extension is in a trailer, basically, by our community center, and I think there's some really great possibilities there for this. Could be used for parks. You know, there's a lot of different uses that this land could be put to. Oh, that was my, that was my, sorry, that was my end of my slide. If we purchase this land, obviously, the first thing we would do is figure out the most suitable place on this land for the judicial building. After that, we would be coming to the board in a future year to do some master planning for this property, of how it could be used over its highest best use. And that would involve public input, and that's something we could work on to sort of set a trajectory of how we best utilize that land in the future. And with that, Mr. Chairman, we're happy to, oh, I also wanted to mention, sorry, forgot this. The board did authorize funding to purchase land. We're about $1 million short. You have agenda item number nine, I believe it is, that would fund the difference. So if you are inclined to proceed with this, I'm looking for action to give me direction to engage to purchase this land. Of course, subject to your approval of agenda item number nine. Thank you.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Nossat?
You made mention of the Minden Inn and selling it, right? So the first thing you probably ought to do is put a hitching post out front. But what about this building and the offices in this building? Are they going to be considered to be part of the new building?
For the record, Patrick Kates, I think so. I think that's dependent on some of that planning that I talked about. This is a historic building. I don't know that we'd want to sell it. Perhaps it could be a museum. Perhaps some county offices stay here. I think that's really subject to that planning process. But I think there's definitely potential there. I mean, we've got, my IT team is located in the basement, for instance. We could definitely move some folks out of this building in the future. We could definitely move some folks out of this building in the future.
Well, given our superior Zoom capabilities here, our moving to someplace else would be a lot better for that. So, you might consider remembering that the old guys that sit on this board wouldn't mind going to a new building.
Commissioner Ingles, I know this has been a, a vision of yours for a long time, so I'm interested in hearing your comments.
Well, it seems like an excellent acquisition price, and we should take advantage of that. And in the interim, I know some cowboys that need some pasture land that they'd like to lease, so maybe we could work with them. Thank you.
Commissioner Rice?
Thank you, sir. Having spent a period of my life in law enforcement and seeing as how many of those years were spent in that building, I, I can tell you, especially working in the courts, this is really, really needed. It's amazing we haven't had some major disaster up there between suspects and victims and witnesses. So, I am so pleased to see this come forward, and you have my complete and total support.
So, and, and I'll also, well, there's a couple of things I'll say. Anyways, I know that we, in our 2021, '22 budget, we did allocate $3 million in CIPs for the purposes of, of land in anticipation of the possibility of relocating our, or at least our judicial processes within the county. And the, the future beyond that of relocating or possibly consolidating county offices is something that certainly is also something that I think the community needs to take a part in and endorse. And I would hope that we would talk about that during our, once again, I, I think I mentioned it, but in our review of this, of the strategic plan for the county and how, how that all comes involved. And then my future question, of course, was going to be, we, we allocated 3 million, and, and yet, this is 5 million, so where are we going to get the money? But I guess that's going to be addressed in the next item. So, I, I will delay anything on that. But I, I concur with the other commissioners that it's, it's time to stop putting Band-Aids on problems and, and resolve issues in, in the benefit and to the benefit of, of our community, long overdue. And so, I'm, I'm extremely pleased that this has finally come forward. With that, I will, if there's no other comments or questions from the board, I'll take this to public comment. Is there any public comment available here in chambers?
James McCallum, for the record. I totally support this. I think we have to look into the future. The, the critical thing right now is the judicial center. But looking, looking forward, moving county offices, expanding, having room to do business, and taking the opportunity that this land seems like a pretty good price, I don't say I can not do it. So, I totally support the, this expenditure and buying this land. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, any other further comment here in public chambers than we'll go to online? Ms. Johnson, is there any public comment online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. I do have one person with their hand raised. Jason, do you have public comment on item number six? Jason, do you have public comment on item number six?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Good afternoon. It takes a while for the connection with the Zoom to, to bring us in. So, thanks for the opportunity. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, please state your name for the record, and we'll start your time.
Okay. Jason Garrett, for the record, on behalf of the House of Gibson and the people of Douglas County, I'd like to thank Jim Slade for writing in to attract your attention. You'll find this on the Douglas County website. It's a letter that was addressed to the Board of Commissioners. I'd just like to highlight a few points here. Jim says that he agrees that an expanded judicial and law enforcement center is due, perhaps long overdue. He goes on to say that 57 acres were allocated as a teaching farm by Buckeye Farms. It seems like the idea is being discarded in a bait-and-switch procedure, I quote. Instead of Park Ranch being expected to put in a teaching farm, they're planning to sell those 57 acres for 5 million. Jim says that while I'm not an appraiser, the 2.5 million appraisal for the, each, for each 19-acre parcel without any water rights seems exorbitant. I'd be curious to find out who hired the appraiser, he says. I don't recall if the Buckeye Farm specific plan went before the Planning Commission, but if so, it seems that it should be reheard by the Planning Commission due to, due to the substantial proposed change in the plan. In addition, it appears that this process, having been delayed for many years, is now being rushed through without sufficient public input. I concur that we need to find a way to draw people into more public dialogue, and opinion poll would be most appropriate for this kind of expenditure. Jim goes on, and he outlines how expensive this endeavor would be during a most unprecedented economic volatility that is going to bring about such radical change that expenditures like this do not take into account not only the plandemic, or the pandemic, as you call it, not only the war in Ukraine, but the alien war economy, which is on the brink of total collapse in the face of what's called the biosphere, noosphere transition. That's the big picture between the sun and the earth. The folks that allocated this land for a teaching project understand how important that agriculture will be in the near future. Some of you may be aware that in the last two months, 35 food distribution centers were torched, mysteriously arsoned, or perhaps some mechanical failure. But it's rather odd that these major distribution food operations would be crippled during a situation that is now...
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. You, you've gone past your three minutes. I appreciate your comments. Thank you. Ms. Johnson, is there any other online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. I do have someone else with their hand raised. Kirk, do you have public comment on item number six?
Yes, I do. My name is Kirk Walder, and I am a member of the Planning Commission, but of course, I'm not speaking for the Planning Commission, or do, I do not represent the Planning Commission in my comments here today. These are my personal comments. I would like to clarify the record. The Planning Commission did hear this issue on approval of the Buckeye Farm specific plan. We heard it on December 8th, 2020, and we approved it by a vote of four to two. It was subsequently approved later that month by the Board of County Commissioners. And I would like to call attention to the, the document, which is the specific plan. It's about 90-some pages, but it very clearly lists the land in question as teaching farm slash future public facilities. So, it was envisioned as a possibility for future public facilities for a long time, and that was approved by the Board of County Commissioners and the Planning Commission. I'd also like to note that the master plan on page 234 does discuss this as well, and it does talk about the need for new facilities. And it said, "The county has contracted with TSK Architects to develop design options to renovate and expand the existing facility," that's the Jalek Building, "or to construct a new facility on a site to be determined." So, nothing is being rushed, nothing has been changed. This has all been approved previously by the Planning Commission and by the Board of County Commissioners. So, I just wanted to make those points and make everyone aware of the situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Walder. Ms. Johnson, is there any other public comment online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. At this time, there's no further public comment online.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the board for further questions and motions. I did want to mention that in this process, I did chat with our county clerk treasurer, Amy Bergens, regarding her facilities, her occupation of this building. And she has indicated that her office, it's, it's extremely important that her office remain intact. She opposes not only the clerk, but also the treasurer and the voter elections. And so, it's extremely important that they remain as one, and they're exceeding their use of the facilities as well. So, this has been identified by a number of departments within our county as, as something that's really needed and long overdue. So, anyways, that's all I wanted to share. Again, commissioners, any other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Resolution 2022-R-59, increasing and transferring the fiscal year 2021-22 budgets.
Mr. Noa Sad, we're, we're actually in item six. So, this is the discussion to approve the purchase. So, you're, you're a little bit ahead of us, but I'll entertain that shortly.
I was going to give you a million dollars.
Well, just write a check. So, item six.
I'm getting there.
Okay.
Page 453.
Okay, once, once again, I make a motion to approve the purchase of 57 acres located on the north side of Buckeye Road east of the Minden Town Maintenance Facility. Assessors, assessors parcel number 1320-28-000-033 for the purpose of constructing a new law enforcement building and future county facilities for $5 million.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Noa Sad, seconded by Commissioner Rice, to, to approve the purchase of 57 acres located on the north side of Buckeye Road. I would like to offer a friendly amendment to that and say a new judicial building versus a new law enforcement building.
I'll second.
Okay. So, friendly amendment to change the wording of that to new judicial center, and seconded by Commissioner Noa Sad. So, any discussion on the changing of the wording? Sensing none, all those in favor of the amendment as proposed, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. So, now, for approval of the discussion to approve the purchase of 57 acres located on the north side of Buckeye Road east of Minden Town Maintenance Facility, assessors parcel number 1320-28-000-033 for the purpose of constructing a new judicial center and future county facilities for $5 million. Parcel is owned by Park Ranch Holdings LLC and is currently zoned ag 19 acres and is identified as the Buckeye Farms specific plan as public facilities. Sensing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Mention passes five to zero, or four to zero, I'm sorry. We're missing Commissioner. I'm sure he would have agreed, though. And now, we're going to try to pay for this, right, Ms. Willoughby? Okay. For, or, or supplement it, the payment anyways. Item seven for possible action, discussion to adopt Resolution 2022-R-059, increasing and transferring the fiscal year 2021-22 budgets of the Douglas County General and Construction Funds by $1 million relating to the planned purchase of land on Buckeye Road for a judicial center project. Ms. Willoughby?
Thank you, Terry Willoughby, for the record. There was some question about how much was actually allocated currently to that project. There is, it's true that you did allocate 3 million in the current year. There was already budget set aside in a prior year. The current balance in that project is 4.5 million, so with this million, it'll be 5.5, so enough. The million-dollar augment comes, 500,000 is from the refund of a transfer to the Senior Services Fund. As you know, now we reconcile those transfers every year. They have returned the unused part of the fiscal year 2021, transferred back to the general fund, so it became available. Also, on January 20, 2022, the board approved a budget augment from the general fund for the Martin Slough Trail to fund that pro, the shortfall on that project. However, subsequently, they received additional grant funding, so that 500,000 is no longer needed. So, that makes up the million dollars. Happy to answer any questions.
All I can say is wow. Thank you. Commissioners, comments? Mr. Commissioner Ingles?
Well, for sure, any money, your friend, Mr. Holmes, might be able to front us a little bit of cash.
Holman, Holman.
Holman.
Like the doctor.
Mr. Holman. Sensing no further questions by the board, we'll go to, this is for possible action, so we'll go to public comment here in chambers. Is there any public comment here in chambers? Sensing none, Ms. Johnson, is there any public comment online regarding item number seven?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. I do have one person with their hand raised online. Jason, do you have public comment on item number seven? Jason, do you have public comment on item number seven?
Yes, we do. Thank you very much for your patience. Jason Garrett, on behalf of the House of Gibson, for the record, thank you. Well, we're talking money. I went down and received my tax obligation, an account ledger, for our property here in the ranches. And now, I know why you folks are hiring an auditor, because our tax bill doesn't make a lick of sense. None of the dates match, none of our payments show.
Mr. Gibson.
And if you folks think that we're going to be funding, if you think we're going to be funding this with no accountability for what's being...
So, anyways, is there any other additional comments? Public comment?
I stopped Mr. Gibson. Do you want to let him continue to speak?
The indication is, is that he's not speaking to the agenda item, so...
Okay. At this time, there's no further public comment online.
Thank you. Bring it back to the board for further questions and/or a motion. And Mr. Noa Sad, you indicated you had a motion on this earlier.
I got that, I got that one. Memorize now. I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2022-R-059, increasing and transferring the fiscal year 2021-22 budgets of the County General and Construction Funds by $1 million as presented.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Noa Sad, seconded by Commissioner Rice, to adopt Resolution 2022-R-059, increasing and transferring the fiscal year 2021-22 budgets of the Douglas County General and Construction Funds by $1 million related to the planned purchase of land for Buckeye Road for a judicial center. Sensing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Thank you. Well, we're moving right along now in our, so, and I believe, Ms. Willoughby, you're up again. So, for possible action, item number nine, discussion to adopt the fiscal year 2022-23 final budgets for Douglas County, the town of Minden, the town of Gardinerville, the town of Geno... town of Genoa, and the Douglas County Redevelopment Agency, including changes from the tentative budget as directed by the Board of County Commissioners, revised general fund revenue estimates, and direction to staff on including additional expenditures in the final Douglas County General Fund budget. CFO, Ms. Willoughby.
Thank you, Terry Willoughby. This will be concluding the end of the budget process for next fiscal year until we start the fiscal year. But we took the items approved at tentative, those have been rolled into the budget. The items that were approved in the capital improvement program that you were approved on April 26th, just the first year, will be rolled into the budget. And everything stands as is. However, I did want to bring something to your attention. We did go back and look at general fund revenues and did find some substantial increase, not substantial, but some increases between the time I did the original estimates and now. And so, at this time, there is a surplus of 787,000 in the general fund that would still be in compliance with the budget policies for the general fund. We would still have a balanced budget, and I wanted to provide you some options for that. One option, there were two items that were unfunded supplementals at the tentative budget that consisted of a update to the Tahoe area plan, spoken with the community development department. Because the funding through the ARPA requests for all of those community development projects, he really doesn't have the capacity to go forward with this item at this time. The other supplemental item request that was not funded was a transfer to the library for supplemental library materials. The other option that we are putting forward at this time as a possibility is an additional 2% cost of living adjustment on July 1st for all Douglas County employees. And this is just the general fund portion, but you can see, this is the amount available, the 778,000, and the net cost for the general fund would be 763,000. And in your packet was the breakdown by fund of that COLA. But of course, the general fund is the largest piece of that. So that's, at this time, we're looking to the board for direction on how to proceed with any of these items.
Commissioner Ingles.
Can we hold this in reserve to keep our power dry in the event the economy goes into a recession?
Terry Willoughby, we certainly could do that. However, we have sufficient reserves at this time due to the general fund policies that we enacted and the board has approved since this time.
Could we take this and apply it to the purchase of that land?
Terry Willoughby, for the record, we've already funded the purchase of the land, so we could put it, there would, if you could identify another project, that that would go forward, that would certainly be, but the land is 100% funded already.
Ms. Willoughby, as I look at this, this would allow us to increase the anticipated, or the budgeted 2% COLA countywide to an additional 2% COLA to help us address the economic issues for our employees. However, if we approved the update of the Tahoe area plan and the supplemental library materials, that would actually exceed our available funds, if I'm reading this correctly. Is, am I doing that?
Terry Willoughby, that's correct. So, we can't do all three, but you could certainly pick and choose.
Okay, so, I mean, my, my general feeling would be to, and the economy is just, you know, and the cost of living is just going upside down right now. And so, I would be in favor personally of striking the update of the Tahoe area plan and the supplemental library materials in favor of approving a 2% additional COLA for our employees to help them catch up a little bit and feel a little bit better about their continued employment with Douglas County. That's my feeling.
Terry Willoughby, for the record, and just for the public's knowledge, the current rate of inflation is over 8% as of this month. So, it's just a little context there.
Commissioner Rice, you had a comment?
I have a question. Would it be possible to do both? Give the 2% COLA as well as update the Tahoe area plan?
There's not, this, this 238,000 would be doing all, so if, you would still be a little short. But we could certainly bring that back mid-year.
And in that case, let me say that I think it's, as much as I want to see the Tahoe plan updated, I believe that sharing with our employees is a very, very important thing for us to do. And I'm willing to forego the Tahoe plan till mid-budget.
Okay, if there's no other questions, we'll go to public comment here in chambers. Is there any public comment here in chambers? Sensing none, Ms. Johnson, do we have public comment online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair Marsha Johnson, for the record. At this time, there's one individual with their hand raised, it's Mr. Gibson.
So, Mr. Gibson, we will hear your public comment at this time, but once again, I ask you to keep it to item number, item number nine on the agenda regarding the final budget process.
Thank you, Chairman. Jason Garrett, for the record, on behalf of the House of Gibson. We appreciate the services, utilities, and the folks who are considered to be Douglas County employees. We know that for the last two years with the COVID pandemic, there's been some flux in the work week. We know that a lot of folks are working from home. We know that a lot of government folks are receiving a full-time salary, working from home, and that's fine. Unfortunately, a majority of government doesn't work on Monday and Friday. And when you have half of the jobs in this country being occupied by public servants, you've got a real imbalance in the spending and budget situation. What we'd like to suggest is that everybody entertain the idea of having a nice, stable government, part-time job, and then be encouraged as an entrepreneur to generate revenues based on savings according to an intelligent organizational principle or design concept, which is referred to as the discovery of the law of time. So we're just going to put that out there, that your monies could be better spent, that we could make more, we could save more, and we could have a better quality of life if we just get with the natural law, the natural order, and the law of time. We're still at lawoftime.org and 13months28days.info. This is the voice piece for the small business revolution for a new time economy where time is art. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Is there any other additional public comment online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair Marsha Johnson, for the record. At this time, there's no additional public comment online.
Bring it back to the board for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the fiscal year 2022-23 fiscal budgets, final budgets, for the Douglas County, the town of Minden, the town of Gardinerville, and the town of Genoa, and the Douglas County Redevelopment Agency, including various changes from the tentative budget and direct staff on included additional general fund items as discussed.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Rice. Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Ingles, to adopt the fiscal year 2022-23 final budgets.
Terry Willoughby, can we specify which items you wanted to fund specifically?
Including the additional general fund items, employee pay adjustment, and employee... Pay adjustment for purse. And employee pay adjustment, taxes, Medicare, and SLITA.
So, okay, so as I understand it, all items except for the update of the Tahoe area plan and the supplemental library materials, is that correct?
It's correct, sir.
Okay. And is that your understanding, Mr. Ingles? Okay. So, with that, we'll go back to this. Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Ingles, to adopt the fiscal year 2022-23 final budgets for Douglas County, the town of Minden, the town of Gardinerville, the town of Genoa, and the Douglas County Redevelopment Agency, including changes from the tentative budget as directed by the county Board of County Commissioners, revised general fund revenue estimates, and direction to staff on including additional expenditures in the final Douglas County General Budget Fund to include all four items marked, employee pay adjustment. Is that clear? Thank you. Sensing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Thank you, Ms. Willoughby.
Thank you, Commissioners, and I really wanted to thank my team, especially Jenny Cartwright, our finance manager, and all the department heads who really came together. And it's not just a finance budget, but it's, it's the county's budget, and they really have a big part in it. So thank you.
Thank you. I believe that will require a memorandum of understanding in regards to the employees other than the, well, I guess all of the employee unions, is that right?
Ms. Lang will be handling that. We wanted to put it in, see if it was appropriate to put it in the budget first. Budget first, then everything else.
Okay, very good. Okay, just want to make sure we're on the same page here. Okay, item, and I hope we can, you know, I know that I need to use the facilities, but, and I suspect my fellow commissioners do as well, but we only have a couple of more items, presentation only, reports and updates from county commissioners, and then closing public comments. So are we good with powering through this?
Well, I want to report that the Debt Management Committee tied their record, four minutes, from gavel down to gavel down.
You get paid for that? Okay. Commissioner Ingles, do you have anything to report? Okay, Mr. Rice? Commissioner Rice?
Just a second, sir. Let me get to Mike.
That's a picture of your wife.
It is a picture of my wife. I carry it everywhere. It's like my... In the last week since our meeting, I attended an LTVA meeting, a TDVA meeting, a non-judicial meeting, a government forum, and Douglas County Sewer Authority meeting yesterday morning along with a TDVA board meeting that evening. And I have nothing to report.
Thank you. I was going to call you a braggart. Anyways, and I have nothing to report as well, so, although my schedule is almost as busy as I'm sure the other commissioners are as well. So at this time, we'll go into closing public comment. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the county Board of Commissioners, or those agenda items where public comment has not already been taken. I would wish to remind the public that we're looking for items that are within the jurisdiction and control of this Board of Commissioners. So, at this time, public comment is open. Mr. Jackson.
Jim Jackson, want to thank you for listening to all of our neighbors and her comments about the Johnson Lane problem we have up there. In listening to the rest of the afternoon, I heard a lot of comments about safety, requiring places to have sprinkler systems, to have different kinds of building materials for the safety of the individuals. Well, we're talking about a big safety issue up on Johnson Lane. Something needs to be done. There's a misconception, I think, that we are against the mine going in altogether. Ideally, that would be the case, but we also realize that it is on federal land, it is BIA, and they have the right to do what they want out there. All we're wanting is to make sure that that doesn't destroy our property values and our quality of life and the safety that we have up in our area right now. And that is reroute how they get their trucks out. If we can do that, everybody up there will be very happy, and we'll quit all the grouching that's going on and stuff. And you won't see me as often then. And with some of the individuals that you get to call in, I hope I don't get classified in with them. So, anyway, but that's my final comments on it, is we're just looking to you to help us out because the BIA won't, and the Bureau of Land Management won't. They've already made their decision. The letter that you're going to send to them, it's a very nice letter, they're not going to do anything. They've already made their decision. The last meeting I was at, when I talked to the woman from BLM, she said it's a done deal. And that was even before this was all out. So that tells you exactly where they're all at. So you're our last hope, and if this doesn't work, then it's going to be left up to the residents in the area, and it's going to get costly. So, we're hoping that you can come up with some restrictions on the road that will make it more expensive for Knox, and that's the way to get a business to change their mind, is make their cost much, much higher. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Sensing no other public comment here in chambers, is there any public comment online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair Marsha Johnson, for the record. At this time, there's one person who has their hand raised indicating they'd like to provide public comment. Jason, do you have closing public comment?
Thank you, folks. Jason Garrett, for the record, on behalf of the House of Gibson, just looking at the final agenda notes here. And this is, we're covering items A through Q, and I noticed that one of the items, and I've been online with y'alls all day, is line item H, which is the...
So, Mr. Gibson... ... armored vehicle. Mr. Gibson, I appreciate your comments. However, we've already gone through that item, and the board approved all those items. So unless you have public comment within the jurisdiction that has not come before us today, we would entertain that, but otherwise, thank you.
I see, Commissioner. So you just bundled all A through Q without any discussion of a quarter of a million-dollar armored vehicle, is that correct?
So, Mr. Gibson, I have had discussions with you previously offline, in private, and...
When?
And, well, actually, during the, during the Business Council...
That wasn't in the private, that wasn't in the public at the candidate forum. What are you talking about?
Mr. Gibson, I'm not going to argue with you if you just listen here for a moment.
Just be straight with me, Commissioner.
So, Nevada revised statutes, we operate under Nevada revised statutes, which allows us to pass consent calendar items on one motion without public comment. And that's what we did. If you had wanted to remove any of those items to our administrative agenda, all you had to do is indicate so during the opening public comment. You did not do so, so therefore, we passed all those items en masse, as allowed by Nevada revised statutes. So, thank you very much, and we're going to move on. With that being said, is there any other public comment? No other public comment, then this meeting is adjourned, and I was hoping by 3 o'clock, and I missed it by five minutes, so.